Calling back to order this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education, item 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance led by our superintendent. Thank you. Student member shake broadcast statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Monday, June 14th at noon, and Wednesday, June 16th at 10:00 p.m. It is also webcast at Metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments which are posted on our website, or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak submitted a speaker form by noon today and were sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to do so orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask you, please defer your comments until your item comes up.
Thank you. Item 4.3 Stellar Student. Our Stellar Student Destiny Griffin is unable to make it tonight, and we will be bringing her back at a future board meeting. Item 5.0 Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
Good evening, President Pritchett. There is one announcement coming out of closed session. On May 27th, the board approved by a vote of 5-0 with members Villa and Phillips absent, a settlement agreement in San Joaquin County Superior Court, case number STK CVUBC 2019-0007274, entitled Sacramento City Unified School District versus Workday Inc. and Sierra Cedar Inc. The settlement agreement has now been finalized and executed by defendants. The essential terms of the agreement include payments totaling $2.75 million by defendants' Workday Inc. and Sierra Cedar Inc. to Sacramento City Unified School District, and a waiver of all outstanding claims by all parties. And that is it.
Ms. Collins. Item 6.0 Agenda Adoption Before I Ask for a Motion. We have one live comment.
Yes, we have a live comment from Terrence Gladney.
Good evening, everyone. I just had a quick, well, I guess not a quick question. It's a quick question in a longer statement. I was just wondering, what is the reasoning for the agenda shuffling? Recent board meetings prioritize public comment and stakeholder communication, but it appears this agenda item, or this agenda prioritizes special presentations and board workshops. While I personally was able to navigate the agenda and plan my evening accordingly, I feel that others that are new to this process and this environment might be lost in the murkiness of a shuffled agenda that is inconsistent with previous meetings. Additionally, public comment, the public comment process is not engaging or consider of stakeholders. There's a three-step process to submit your intent to live comment, and only a two-step process to submit a written comment, so it seems pretty inconsistent or perhaps intentional. In addition to that, on the forum for tonight, there were like 10-plus unused options for basically the radio buttons to select agenda items, but none of the communication items were available for selection, so when I commented later, I had to, you know, specify in the other section that I wanted to comment on communication, which was 10.0, 10.1, and so forth. I asked that if this is the norm for this foreseeable future, how will you better align the stakeholder engagement process with what we've previously known while leveraging the newly available technology to enhance the experience, including but not limited to the availability of screen sharing or other mechanisms to increase the interactive experience and refine the public comment process, and allowing comments closer to real time, as was the case with in-person meetings at Cerner Center, that provided commenters the added benefit of making last-minute decisions to comment on something that was unexpected or previously unknown that arose during presentations. Thank you.
Can I just answer that real quick? We hope to have you all back live in the soon near future, but in terms of the shuffling of the agenda, I have asked in the past, this is actually the normal way that the agenda is right now, but a couple of meetings ago, I've asked for the communications to be put ahead of public hearings, and it was because of the public hearings brought it to a very late hour. So I was being very considerate to the public and asked for it to be brought forward, but because now it's at a reasonable hour, we left it at this. So just, I wanted to make sure I got that, that I answered your question, Terrence. Okay, can I get a motion for agenda adoption?
Moved.
All right, all student preferential vote.
Aye.
All in papers say aye. All right. Item 7.0, we have 30 public comments, live public comments tonight. So if it's the world of the board, I'd love to hear all 30 public comments at one minute per public comment. Thank you.
Our first public comment is from Alan Cox.
Hello.
Yes, hello, Mr. Cox. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm an elementary teacher in the district. I'm also a parent of a child with autism, and I wish to speak for a moment about students in our district with special needs and their ability to participate in more in-person instruction, per the board's decision to move to four days a week of in-person instruction a couple of weeks ago. Our students with special needs have the most intensive needs and are the ones most directly affected by instructional changes, such as the decision I just mentioned. I wish there had been sufficient time and resources devoted beforehand in terms of planning so these students could participate equally in class with their typical peers. I feel it should be the priority, the top priority of any district's leadership to provide a free, appropriate, equitable education for all students. In my own class, a student of mine who has an in-class aide and has a strong need for a highly consistent school routine with the same aide each day. My student was not given that resource-
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Please wrap it up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will. So in the future, in the fall, I would like to see this changed, and all of its students, all of our students with special needs and typical peers to be given the same routine, same education for five days a week in a dedicated class environment, whether that be in the classroom or in a virtual academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, Ms. Marty?
Yes, our next speaker, our next speaker is Angie Sutherland, and she's combining time with Grace Trujillo.
Thank you. Good evening, Angie.
Hello. The coalition, I just want to say that the coalition supports our superintendent. He has made continuous efforts to right the wrong that's been happening in our district for decades, but unfortunately, he's been unfairly targeted and villainized by the Sacramento City Teachers Association leadership. Despite his many transformative accomplishments and putting students first, Renee Webster Hawkins posted a written comment on behalf of the coalition on item 3.1 about the no-confidence vote. I just want to read over some of the tactics that SCTA has been doing. It's not new. It's been going on for a long time. It's like clockwork every year. Their press release is full of lies. They've also scapegoated and bullied past superintendents and board members who've made a difference for students. Contrary to their claims, Superintendent Aguilar has a track record of positive efforts and results. SCTA even blamed him for the failures to appropriately teach students with disabilities. But we know the truth. Back in the 90s, SCTA negotiated Appendix D, which unlawfully gave them the option of whether to teach these students and support the IEP plans mandated by their federal civil rights. But in 2017, Aguilar and his team, and former board president Jesse Ryan, and other board members insisted that the illegal and immoral right be dropped from the collective bargaining agreement. It was Aguilar and his team in fall 2017 that committed to supporting the Community Advisory Committee with translators to help more families access the presentations and engage with other parents of students with disabilities. It was Aguilar and his team, yes.
Oh, if you could please wrap it up. Thank you.
I believe, I think I'm also combining my time with Renee.
Yeah, but it was at one minute. That's why.
Oh, one minute only? Oh, well, that Renee and Grace.
Oh, okay. So you have one additional minute.
Yeah. It was Aguilar and his team who designated and launched the Dyslexia Intervention Pilot Program despite SCTA's resistance to its members participating in a district-wide intervention program. It was also Aguilar and his team who have implemented a district-wide early literacy and math assessment program. It was also Aguilar and his team that designed the MTSS system that will support all students and serve students with disabilities. It has also been Aguilar and his team that reopened and collapsed cohorts, bringing as many kids back as possible to school in person. In spring 2020, the CAC General Membership approved a letter which documents all of these advancements by the superintendent and the district, not only to have them repeatedly thwarted by SCTA filing grievances or lodging other threats. Lest we forget, the SCTA insisted on a clause in the recent Special Education Evaluations MOU to make it voluntary for its members, including school psychologists and resource teachers, to serve special education students during the pandemic. This is unconscionable, so we would like you to just stop it, please, SCTA. We ask the board to support our superintendent, who's been actively working to advance equity for all SCUSD students. We need his continued leadership now more than ever. Thank you.
Please wrap it up, Angie. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharnay Moore.
Hi, yes, I'm going to give my time to Ingrid Hutchins.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ingrid Hutchins.
Hello, I'll be combining my time with Sharnay Moore and Holly Conway.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ingrid Hutchins. I'm one of the Black educators you have employed in the district. I would like to bring your attention tonight to the lack of equity that exists in our district. While I recognize how our district's inequities affect all BIPOC communities, tonight I'll focus solely on how they affect the Black community. I used to feel hopeful when I heard phrases from the superintendent or board members that sounded like you were working on becoming an anti-racist governing board. That hope is gone. Perhaps you've read the books, attended the conferences, changed your avatars to Black screens, affirmed publicly that Black Lives Matter, but you haven't done the work. What do I mean by that? Over the past few meetings, you were presented with scientific data regarding the effects of COVID on the Black community. An anti-racist board would have taken the time to discuss how that data would unpack our district's Black community. An anti-racist board would acknowledge the data and take the time to research how Black families within our district felt about those risks. An anti-racist board would have had acknowledged the fact that a father called in to say he didn't feel his Black son would be safe in a fully collapsed classroom. You may have still come to the same conclusion in the end, but you would have had enough respect to have done the work first if you were truly anti-racist. How else do I know that this board isn't truly anti-racist? I see how you treat member Phillips. We all see how you treat her. Black women experience a unique type of discrimination termed misogyny that is painfully obvious when we watch your interactions with her. If you're unfamiliar with that term, it refers to the specific hatred, dislike, distrust, and prejudice that is directed toward Black women. Since you seem unaware of your microaggressions when she pointed them out to you during a recent board meeting, I'll give you some examples. A few weeks ago, member Phillips asked a simple question about the data from the CDC regarding distancing in secondary classrooms. When any other board member asked such a question, the rest of you addressed him or her with collegial respect. Members snapped back at her. Aguilar addressed her question a little later in the evening with disdain. The way you treated her caused her to feel the need to explain herself, to apologize because she thought she somehow came across as hostile, but she didn't. There's not a single Black woman I know who hasn't felt the same way member Phillips did that night. She tried to bring this behavior to your attention in the last meeting when she explicitly asked you why you answer member Murawski differently than you addressed her. You had a chance then to stop. You had a chance to do the work and to listen to a Black voice. Listen to understand instead of respond, and you failed. Instead of taking pause to realize that, in fact, you were treating her differently, you fired back at her with the same exact microaggressions that she was attempting to call out. Representation is important in all aspects of life. Member Phillips represents not only Area 7, but she also symbolically represents the Black students, families, teachers, principals, and classified staff members in this district. We can't trust you to make decisions to fight the inequities, biases, cultural, I'm sorry, structural racism, and privilege in our district when we can't even trust you to treat one of your own members with the same respect that you extend to the rest of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins.
Can I have just another second?
Yes, if you could just please wrap it up.
Thank you. I most certainly will. I just want to quote Dr. Kamika Royal, and she says, "You cannot fight for people and demonize them at the same time." Aguilar, board members, you need to do the work. We are waiting for your actions to match your words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next, go ahead. Our next speaker is Damian Harmony.
Are we there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I am speaking with combined minutes from Zachary Bryant. If you need to verify that, you can certainly ask him right now.
Okay, we're gonna give you two minutes. Go, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, on March 4th, the SCUSD Facebook page, you claimed, quote, "We're going above local, state, and federal requirements to ensure the highest levels of safety for our students. We've thought of everything. So we, the public, will take you at your word. Let's take stock of what that means." 161 positive COVID cases since reopening in late March. Almost immediately, you chose to shrink the distance to three feet and collapse cohorts. You thought of everything and decided to implement that change once people were back for a week. 128 students have contracted COVID since our reopen. You thought of everything, including COVID long haulers and the neurological and physical impacts of this preventable disease, which families in our community will continue to feel after this spring. You thought these long-term ramifications were worth the hasty return. Since you thought of everything, you thought our internet infrastructure was sufficient, but for a single screw on backorder. You thought of everything, and that means you thought that the teachers subsidizing your choices with their own personal devices as hotspots, eating away at their data plans, and leaving no time to test any of it, shows that you thought of everything, and decided that the destabilizing, the destabilizing impact of all of this on our students was fully worth it. With no ability to deliver instruction traditionally, the totality of our curriculum was digital. Therefore, you thought that weak bandwidth, inaccessible websites, interrupted learning, and an unspoken dependence on teachers' personal devices was worth it. You thought of everything from the safe distance of a Zoom meeting. You thought of everything for the affluent and the privileged, and for the school sites you know best. You misused words like equity, fear mongering, and mental health as talking points, while ignoring your fellow board members and neglecting those communities most affected by COVID. You sent staff and students to school with only voluntary testing and deflated data, but without thorough protocols in place during a historic pandemic. You spent our students' time, our schools' money, and the health of many. You didn't think to ask many of us if it was worth the risk to our lives, because you already thought of everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Marty.
Yes, our next speaker is Daniel Darby. Looks like, oh, yes, there he is.
Good evening, board and superintendent. I would like to follow up the comments made by a prior speaker. I believe his name was Mr. Gladney, in that it has come to my understanding that there's been a couple of board meetings that were, I don't know, I guess you guys called them special or emergency board meetings, and yet there was little to no announcement of those meetings. Now, I understand that just by the basis of their name, that there are meetings of short notice, but I am on your e-connections email list, and I cannot help but think that you guys could have put that in the e-connections list, so I would at least have some notice, because I cannot sit around and check your calendar on a daily basis to see if there's any meetings that come up. Second issue that I would like to bring up is a stuff of, what I'm hearing from some of the other members of the public speaking tonight, we seem to have a trust issue. The community does not seem to trust the district, and based off of what I'm hearing, a couple, several employees-
Thank you, Mr. Darby, if you could please wrap it up.
Several employees or employee groups do not have a trust, do not trust the people in charge of this district. So I would ask that we try to tighten it up here and give the public more chances to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Our next speaker is David Fisher.
Thank you.
I'm ceding my time to Nikki Malewski.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nikki Malewski.
Good evening, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This past Tuesday, we presented the district's bargaining team with SCTA's Back to School Better framework for returning to in-person instruction in the fall. Even though this is one of the most important discussions that needs to occur in our district, and even though we specifically asked for him to participate in our negotiations, Superintendent Aguilar was nowhere to be found. And it may be that that's a good thing, because the overwhelming vote of no confidence from both teachers and support staff makes it clear, the district leadership needs a complete overhaul. During a meeting of our bargaining team and site reps on May 27th, multiple reps and bargaining team members expressed their growing frustration and disappointment in the continued and ongoing lack of leadership on the part of Superintendent Aguilar. Many site leaders commented on the school board's inability or unwillingness to hold the superintendent accountable for the multiple failures and broken promises over the past years. Members of the team expressed a desire to do more than just file a perb complaint of the 16 we've already filed, and felt it was time to make a strong statement from all of our members. When one site leader suggested holding a vote of no confidence, others expressed strong support for the idea. The results of that are clear and unambiguous. SCTA and SEIU represent over 95% of the district employees, and over 96% of those voted in a very high turnout have said they have no confidence in Superintendent Aguilar. We look forward to the resumption of in-person instruction on September 2nd, 2021, the commencement of the 21, 2021-22 traditional academic school year, with the ongoing increase of state funding that raises funding from approximately $11,000 to $20,000 per student, with the addition of $313 million in state and federal funding related to COVID mitigation. We have once-in-a-generation opportunity for the Sacramento City Unified School District to make significant advances to improve student learning. Educators overwhelmingly have expressed that they have no confidence-
Please stop it up.
-those opportunities will be realized with the current superintendent.
Thank you.
Neither, none of you were at the negotiations table, nor was Superintendent Aguilar. We will share with you later tonight, and with the public, those ideas that we have presented in our Back to School Better framework. Thank you.
Next speaker. Yes, our next speaker is David Gonzalez.
Hello, school board. I'm an elementary educator of the district, and I'm really confused right now. Even though the MOUs of labor partners are in full effect for the remainder of the school year, I'm trying to understand why Aguilar deceived you, the school board, into unlawfully violating agreements with labor partners. Since when was it acceptable for laws to be broken? And also, I'm really confused, and I'm trying to understand why Superintendent Aguilar deceived school site administrators into unlawfully violating agreements with their labor partners. And as a result of Superintendent Aguilar's disdain for bargaining, administrators this year were continually pressured by district leadership into violating working conditions. That could have been worked out, but Superintendent Aguilar refused to sit at the table with labor partners. And by the district acting unlawfully and violating their MOUs, the district reduced the safety standards to the absolute minimum of the required guidelines, when we know elementary children are not vaccinated.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Please wrap it up.
Okay, I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Erin Dark.
Sorry about that. Thank you, board members. I'm a 7th grade teacher in our district, and I would like to speak about my union and our bargaining team. We are not a group of three leaders, but a group of close to 100 dedicated educators, and as a group, we represent teachers at our school sites and advocate and fight for what we believe is best for our students. This includes smaller class sizes, more counselors, social workers, and psychologists. We advocate for restorative practices, expanding arts and music, expanding child development, and the list goes on and on. Our bargaining team is large, our wills are strong, and our opinions diverse, but at the end of the day, we come together guided by what we believe the young people we serve need. And there's one thing missing from our work. It's leadership on the other side of the table. After months and even years of this process, not once has our superintendent participated in a meeting. He has not come to speak with us, the ones who work countless hours and sacrifice to care for the young people in front of us each day. Is this process contentious? Is the relationship between teachers and the district strained and difficult? Oftentimes, it is, but we show up to do the work, not because it is easy, but because we respect each other, our children, and the process. It is not too much to expect the same of the leader of our district.
Thank you. Next comment?
Our next speaker is Jody Bone.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jody Bone, and I teach 1st grade at Golden Empire Elementary School. This is my 36th year teaching in the Sacramento City Unified School District. I've always wanted to be a teacher, and have had, and have experienced enjoyment and success as a dedicated and effective elementary educator at both Golden Empire and NCCs Elementary Schools. In recent years, I've become disillusioned with our district leadership group, from financial mismanagement to the breaking of our contract and signed MOUs, to the inability of the district to accurately count student enrollment, to the unilateral implementation of cumbersome and non-useful elementary assessments, just to name a few. But it is the district's actions or lack thereof during the past 15 months of distance learning that have led me to a point of no confidence in our district's leadership. Just a few examples of our district's inability to provide support and inspiration during this time are the purchase of tech equipment. I purchased a monitor, adapters, and a second laptop in the spring of 2020. The district bought equipment for teachers, but not until the spring of 2021, a year too late. The promised-
Jody Bones, please wrap it up.
...in the spring of 2021 was nonexistent. Boxes of equipment sat on the classroom floor until we set it up ourselves. Distance learning tech training was missing, as was appropriate internet when we returned to in-person teaching. I've taught concurrently from my phone multiple times when the internet failed at school. Materials were purchased, or teacher purchased, teacher prepared, and teacher distributed.
Ms. Bones, please wrap it up.
...school entry, lining up in the playground, recess, snack, and dismissal procedures, and preparation of boxes for materials for students to work in were put together by the school staff. The only thing I noticed that was provided by the district was the safety placards posted around the school. The room capacity sign on my door still hangs empty with no number limit posted. Everything I do in distance learning, I learn because of the resourcefulness and hard work of school personnel, both classified and certificated. I will continue to provide effective, inspired, and challenging experiences for my students, but would certainly prefer to do so with the confidence of knowing I will have the-
Thank you, Ms. Bones.
-support from our district leadership. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Doe.
Hi, everybody. This is Mo Kashmir. I'm the one who deserves the John Doe. I just wanted to say quickly that, like I've said every meeting, you know, I think this does, this board has the choice of whether they're gonna go down the path of labor strife, and it's- strife and it's only going to escalate for here, or they can work collaboratively with their staff. I know that nobody takes lightly a vote of no confidence, especially staff, and taking a vote of no confidence against your own supervisor takes a lot of courage and honestly doesn't usually happen unless there's been repeated screw-ups. And that's what we've had here. You know, we've just had problem after problem after problem, as the teachers have said. And what I'm urging you to do is get yourself involved. Go to the bargaining. Help us resolve this. Advocate for, you know, we know we have a lot of extra COVID money. Let's put it to the places we need by lowering class sizes, getting more social workers, getting more psychologists, implementing a real culture of restorative justice and, you know, and of just community where we're accountable to each other. So again, the choice is the board's. They're either going to, you're either going to decide to continue along the path of labor strife.
Thank you, Mr. Kashmiri. Please wrap it up.
Or we can work together to create a different outcome. I hope you'll choose the latter. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Myers.
Yeah, good evening, board and superintendent. This is John Myers with Open SAC City Schools. It's been about two weeks since most kids went back to school, up to four days a week. And just want to, you know, for our group, really want to say thank you. Thank you to all the teachers and staff, and thank you to the board and superintendent for making this happen. Hopefully, we can commit to never let kids get in the middle of labor negotiations and labor bargaining again, like what happened here, but we are very happy to have the kids back. And I have a request. We're entering into the summer. Can the board commit to put together a timetable for negotiations with labor? We hear, you know, we're hearing a lot of the negativity here tonight. We know it's going to be a tough summer. If we had a timetable to know whether we're on track or off track, I think that would help a lot of families be prepared for the fall and whether, whether labor's going to, you know, show up and work in the fall or not. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Great suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Myers. Next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Kara Sinhorst.
Hello.
We can hear you.
Thanks. Sorry, I had to, there we go. So I want to point out that it was Aguilar and his team who were in charge while we had a teacher shortage so serious that hundreds of students didn't have a teacher all year. It was Aguilar and his team while we had the first strike since I, a 21-year teaching veteran, was in the ninth grade. This district has been excoriated by FICMAT, set a record for the number of labor law violations, has paid millions in legal fees, has an abysmal record for serving students with disabilities and suspension rates of black kids, and has the fiscal mismanagement been, it's been so bad that panicked parents created advocacy groups. This body has seen dozens of parent groups show up to advocate for saving music, saving preschool, saving after-school care, because we're in a constant state of chaos and panic, which seems at times driven intentionally by Aguilar and his team. And now the two biggest labor partners voted, both at over 96%, that we have no confidence in Mr. Aguilar to lead the district. And people still think teachers had to be bamboozled and to losing faith in the superintendent. I was in the room where it happened, S C T A's rep council, and I witnessed the topic of the no confidence vote come up organically.
Please wrap it up.
Suggested by a rank-and-file teacher. Don't let folks fool you into thinking that we're led around by the nose. We know that we have an abysmal leadership vacuum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Karen Hall Sandland.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I am both a teacher and a parent in this district and just feel compelled what this year and especially the last month has felt like as a teacher. I want to paint a picture. Imagine a vast sea with a tempest approaching. My 32 students are huddled in a lifeboat and there I am treading water trying to pull them to safety. You, the district leadership, are bobbing along in a massive ship. As the waves become mountains around us and our voices become lost in the gale, does the ship send out lifeboats? Does the captain finally draw near to bring us into safety? No. Instead of help, you send a bucket brigade to pour bucket after bucket of water on my head, and I cannot catch my breath. And still, I tread water and hold on to that rope. As your ship moves away from us and the waves begin to settle, I see thousands like me, teachers, principals, custodians, yard duties, aides, lunch service personnel, and the list goes on. Thousands of us treading water and clutching to ropes attached to boats with children huddled onboard. All you needed to do was get in that boat, row out to us, and reach out a hand, but you didn't.
Ms. Hall Sandland.
We needed a captain. We needed a captain, but you were nowhere to be found. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Lisa Stinson.
Hello, my name is Lisa Stinson, and this is the first time I've attended a board meeting, but I just needed my voice to be heard. My deepest concern is for the students. And what I see year after year is lack of resources to help students. And I'm just going to give you the demographics of my classroom. I have five Farsi-speaking students and one student from Vietnam that came in three weeks ago. I have eight English-language learners that speak Spanish or come from a Spanish background. I have over 12 students that are far below grade level. I have students coming in year after year at a third-grade level unable to decode and write sentences, and it's not the teacher's fault. You know, they say it takes a village to raise a child. We need resources in the classroom to help the teachers facilitate and meet the needs of these students that so desperately need to learn. And with this rigorous Benchmark Advance program, they're not able to reach that. They're not able to even get to that, not with what resources, what very little resources we have to provide them. And so my hope is that we find more resources in the classroom to help our students. That's my hope.
Thank you, Ms. Stinson.
Our next speaker is Marcel Emparo.
Good evening. I am, I haven't been able to come to a board meeting because arranging my life is, in the evening at home, has been difficult. And it really is frustrating that it's okay for 24, or, you know, three feet apart, about 20 kids to be in a classroom, but we can't meet in person, so I don't have to inconvenience my whole family to say what I'd like to say. It, it's really hard to understand why there's so much dysfunction in so many different areas in our district. And I, so I joined the bargaining team this year. I've been going, I've been trying, and the person who makes a decision or brings it to you doesn't come. Sometimes there's not one educator there. And it's really frustrating because nothing gets done. And, and the, the public is told, oh, well, S C T A, they just won't back down. They want money, money, money.
Thank you, Ms. Emparo. Please wrap it up.
This, though, other districts, the superintendents come to the bargaining table. It's normal in San Juan and Twin Rivers. It happens as a norm. And when I talk to people I know there, they can't believe that we, that our superintendent doesn't come to talk to teachers because.
Emparo, please wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Reynoso.
Good evening. I was listening to the district's plan last week at the board meeting for the plan with the COVID relief funding, and I wanted to say that I appreciated the district's inclusion of M T S S foundations and mental health support and increased technology. However, I was surprised that the plan to strengthen academic achievement consisted predominantly of added district administrative positions and neglected class size reduction. Furthermore, I was appalled when I learned about the district's plans to use some of these COVID dollars to increase legal services. With counsel from their outside legal firm, SAC City has lost a number of grievance arbitrations and perb litigations. It seems to me that the district isn't getting a good return on its nearly $3 million investment in the outside law firm. I urge the board to reconsider using CARES Act dollars to fund lawyers that fight with teachers. I also encourage using this relief money on lowering class sizes where children would receive direct and immediate relief.
Thank you, Ms. Reynoso.
Our next speaker is Renee Webster Hawkins.
Hi, I am donating my time to, I believe, either Angie or Sarah.
Yeah, I believe it was Angie Sutherland. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rich Faskew.
Good evening, Rich.
Good evening, superintendent, board president, Pritchett. Again, appreciate the opportunity, but again, I'll just come up here and talk about, you know, I was sophomore over at Hiram Johnson, and again, the facts keep going on the table and the facts and the numbers are the same, right? The highest suspension rate, the highest number of English learners, highest number of students with disability, high chronic absenteeism, long-term, highest number of long-term English learner quarter of our school at least. You know, and we talked about the L cap and the COVID funding. I want to know, I want to see it as a parent. How, how am I going to see this money coming to our students? Again, we have one of the highest need schools in your district, and these are the facts. And we, do we care about them? What are we doing? Again, what are we doing? Please. I mean, I've been to all the school site councils, all these meetings, and, you know, what is it to show for? Again, start letting us see this. This navigating this system has been exhausting. I'm exhausted. I don't even have any, you know, will to fight anymore. I mean, start showing us something. Again, a lot of work's being done over there. We got a lot of good leadership, a lot of good teachers, but again, we need support from the district. We need the funding. This was the last year of school improvement grant. We couldn't even implement that effectively. So again, please just, you know, we got all this extra money and I want to see it at the table at our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Our next speaker is Sarah Williams Kingsley.
Good evening. Good evening, board, president Pritchett, and superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board. I just sat through a long list of people who, they're really angry, and I think a lot of that anger is justified, but I think it's partially misdirected, in all honesty. The frustration that the teachers are expressing, I don't hear a lot of self-reflection about how we've ended up in this place. The suspension data, as Rich just mentioned, for example, the board and the superintendent and the district staff are not suspending anyone. If there's a suspension problem, it comes from the classroom and from our school sites. And we know that there's a suspension problem. For the special ed issue, the C D E wouldn't have had to step in and warn the district if our teachers' union and our teachers' union rep staff had been performing these special education assessments when they were asked. The superintendent brought this to the attention and had a proposal in October, and it didn't get signed until February.
Karen, please wrap it up.
I'm so angry that this has all devolved into this place. And I want people to hold themselves accountable for the mess that we're in, and that includes the board. If the teachers' union is mad about three feet, the board should be very loudly taking responsibility for the fact that they directed the superintendent to do it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Chase.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Scott Chase. I'm a teacher in the district. This is my 32nd year in the district. I'm here to present some good information about the SAC City's budget. For the last 10 years, the SAC City Unified has projected huge budget deficits, when in fact, nine of the last 10 years have resulted in a surplus. Right now, SAC City has $100 million in its extra revenue, its surplus fund, more than eight times required by the state. And, you know, theuniversity.com issued a report in April, the top five states that have a teacher shortage. California was listed as number one. In fact, they listed it as severe. Many districts in the, in the state are giving teachers a $7,000 bonus because California is having a hard time finding teachers. But because of these misaccurate budget projections, since 2018 to 19, the district has issued 100, 1,000 certificated and classified layoff notices. But I have some good news to report. Here's the good news. The good news is that there's 313 million in new federal and state COVID dollars, including huge increases from the state of California. This year, 15.5 million. Next year, 27.4.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Please wrap it up.
And 82.5 million in new ongoing revenue. The district has a financial position that provides a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make significant improvements to students' learning conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Chase.
Including lowering class sizes, enhance Richmond programs like Music and Arts for All Students, and increase supports for students, all the while by paying teachers a competitive wage. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Good evening again. As it had to do with my, with a few different groups of my students earlier this year, I'm going to make myself, myself vulnerable to you all. Following recent board meetings, I honestly was in a place boarding on defeat, an uncertain place, a place of fear, and honestly, on the verge of tears. I witnessed selective application of quote-unquote "science," selective response and reference to public comments, proclamation of the necessity to tie expenditures to student outcomes, and the demand for data to make those associated decisions, but yet, they were followed by blind acceptance of a salary increase, for example. I saw a presentation on equity in facilities expenditures immediately followed by a question on how we make sure each school gets something, which is not equity. I ask of you, what are your priorities as a board? What compass guides your decisions, each and every decision? You each have your own personal experiences that you bring to this body, but collectively, what do you as a board, as a body, stand for? What pushes you to have difficult conversations but returns you to a place of respect bonded by a common cause? What are your priorities that will establish confidence in your stakeholders that you are a body operating and making independent decisions as a body that directs staff, not follows them?
Thank you, Karen.
What will you do to instill confidence in your community that you guys are truly children-centered in your words and your actions?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Hanneman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, board members. My name is Teresa Hanneman. I'm a second-grade teacher at Parkway Elementary. I've been in the district for 20 years. I am one of the many employees in this district who just voted no confidence in our superintendent, and I have serious concerns about this district's lack of a plan for our students who thrived in a virtual learning setting or whose families won't feel comfortable sending them back onto campuses next year. All of the surrounding districts are offering virtual academies for their students. At our last bargaining session, the chief academic officer confirmed that our district had not filed to do so. Why is that? Does the district really care about equal access to a quality education? While you were thinking of everything, why didn't you take the time to create an alternate learning environment for those who desire it? This looks like another example of the complete disconnect between the school board and the community and its needs. Based on past practices, my guess is that this district will try to force teachers and these students into another concurrent learning year where neither the students in the classroom nor the ones on the other end of glitchy Wi-Fi are getting quality learning time they deserve with their teachers and peers.
If you could please wrap it up.
What is your plan? Our students and families deserve better. Your employees deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Ketchel.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I am a parent as well as a teacher in SAC City Unified School District. I went to SAC City Unified School District, and the concern that I have is about the use of COVID funds. I'm thinking that we need to make sure that you pay attention to three things. That resource teachers that you want, that we want to have at the schools maybe should be turned into actual teachers of the classrooms and have lower class sizes. I will be teaching a split grade level for the third time, which shouldn't happen for kids at school. I, I think that I'm pretty good at it, but they shouldn't be forced in that situation going from 24 kids in primary. situation, going from 24 kids in primary to 33 in intermediate. Also, there's a huge reserve fund. I don't think that we need to have that made any larger, and those extra monies from the COVID funds should actually go to school sites. They should go to buildings. They should go to students. They should go to tech upgrades. They certainly should not be going toward paying any more administration, and they should not be going toward paying any attorney fees. As I've said-
If you could please wrap it up.
As I've heard other people say, you guys are our board, and you are in charge, not the superintendent, and I wish that you guys would listen to your constituents.
Thank you.
Our next and final speaker online is Tracy Adams.
Hi, did I do it right? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Tracy Adams, and I'm proud to say I am a product of Sac City Unified School District. So are my children, and I chose to work at Sac City when I had other districts surrounding me, because I really believe that our district, being from the capital, should be the most awesome, sought-after and productive district in the state. I'm very excited that we have this opportunity to return even better to the 2021-2022 school year. While I agree with a lot of the comments made about past choices and actions our district board and even, you know, union have made, I really want to focus forward. So for the next 30 seconds, I would really like to stress upon this district board and all members to really be using this opportunity to make up for the learning loss that has happened in the last year and a half by eliminating split classes, reducing class size, and hiring intervention and resource teachers at every school site. Split classes are not, even in a normal year, a great way to educate children.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. If you could please wrap it up.
The amount of loss that children have already experienced, we really need to make them the priority. When grants, schools get money, the first thing they do is lower class size and higher intervention, and that's because research shows that's what works. So I beg upon you, I plead with you guys, moving forward, that needs to be a number one priority for our district. We need to put our students first and their education first. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8.0, special presentation, 8.1, approved resolution, approved resolution number 3208, recognizing Pride Month, June 2021, Vice President Murawski.
Thanks so much. So it's really an honor to be able to present this tonight. As we acknowledge June 2021 as Pride Month, I first just want to acknowledge the kind of messy and radical roots of this of Pride Month and from the Stonewall uprising, and particularly the role of transgender women of color in standing up to state-sponsored oppression. I think it's just important to kind of start, start there, right? I want to share a story with you really quickly. I was standing outside recently at one of my elementary schools, welcoming everyone to campus, and as it's Pride Month, I put on this tiny pin. It's like almost, you know, it's so small, it's hard to see. But a student was walking up to the gate, and they were wearing a sweatshirt with kind of rainbow stripes on the side, and they kind of slowed down and looked at me, and so I smiled and said, "I like your sweatshirt." And they looked at me and kind of paused and said, "I like your pin." And it was just this moment of connection, and it really stuck with me and hit me deeply, because I could tell that they noticed and that it really meant something in that moment. And we can forget that, but it's so important as our youth are kind of forming their identities, for them to know that they are not just tolerated, but that we celebrate them. So even though many of our youth are so far ahead of us in terms of honesty and acceptance of issues around gender and sexual orientation, this resolution recognizes our LGBTQ students are often faced with misunderstanding, bias, and bullying and hostility based on their identity at school. It references the district's significant commitments, resources, and policies related to our LGBTQ youth. And finally, it reflects the extreme stress that COVID-19 has put on to many of our LGBTQ youth. And I just want to share a couple of statistics. According to a recent survey of LGBTQ youth by the Trevor Project, only one in three said their homes were LGBTQ-affirming. 70% said their mental health was poor most of the time, or always during COVID-19, and 42% seriously considered attempting suicide in the last year, including more than half of transgender and non-binary youth. So given that dire situation, this resolution also asks staff to include plans to meet the unique needs of our LGBTQ students, families and staff in COVID-19 recovery planning and implementation. So with that, I'd like to invite just very quick words from a couple of our partners here. Eric X. Perez with the Sacramento LGBT Center to share the community perspective, and after that, we'll hear from Daniel Sisneros of our amazing Connect Center. And, Anne, do we have Eric X. Perez on the line?
Yes, I am here.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. So hello, everyone. My name is Eric X. Perez, and I am here on behalf of the Sacramento LGBT Community Center. This has been a difficult year for LGBTQ+ students. Over the past year, I have worked with students that have felt unsafe in their homes due to their gender and/or sexual orientation. I have talked to youth who miss in-person pride clubs and their GSAs, and unfortunately, I have also witnessed the drastic toll that this pandemic has taken on the mental health of students. This year has been full of many challenges, but we have tried our best to provide as much support by building community online. We hold virtual youth meetings, arts and craft workshops, and even karaoke and open mic nights. This past weekend, in collaboration with the Connect Center, we held Be Brave BU, an annual LGBT conference for youth in the Sacramento area. For many students, this conference was one of the few places this year where they could be their authentic selves and find community with other students. I am here today in full support of the resolution. I know how important it is for students to be in a space that not only affirms and supports them, but also celebrates them wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for the center, for all you do for our community. We really, really appreciate your partnership. And with that, I'd love to ask Daniel Sisneros of our Connect Center to say a few words. Thank you, Daniel, and I want to appreciate the help you've given me personally, as well with my son.
Thank you, Board Member Murawski, and good evening, board members, superintendents, educators, families, and students. My name is Daniel Sisneros, and my pronouns are he/him, and I'm the Mental Health Coordinator of the Connect Center. Buenas noches, familias y comunidad. Mi nombre es Daniel Sisneros, coordinador de servicio de salud mental con el distrito. So I've worked for different school districts locally, and I specifically wanted to come to Sac City because of the LGBTQ Connect Center and the inclusivity that we have. At the Connect Center, we specialize in LGBTQ+ support and staff, including trainings. This year, just like Board Member Murawski was talking about, about students being homebound and the difficulty, we know our students struggle with that. So we were very intentional about creating collaboration with all of our GSAs. We had monthly Netflix watch parties where we brought community with students. It was very, very important for us to be able to do that. And like Eric X. mentioned about the conference, I'm actually wearing, I don't know if you could see the visual, but this is a sash that was created for all the students, and in collaboration with the conference, all of our students virtually were able to dance together, be together, and it created a really important space for those, especially who are homebound, and for those who don't have supportive family members at home. I know firsthand what that could be like. I grew up in a very rural south of Fresno, where I wasn't able to be open, and I know that factor for students, just the fact like Board Member Murawski mentioned, someone having a pin, or someone having even a sticker makes it a safe place, and sometimes educators are the only safe places. So I appreciate the invite, and happy pride.
Thank you so much, Daniel. I really appreciate you both and all of the staff who work so hard with our LGBTQ students. So I just want to say to all of those students and staff, we see you, we celebrate you, and just respectfully request an iVote on this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Murawski. I believe we have two public comment on this item.
There is one public comment from Renee Webster-Hawkins.
Hello, President Pritchett, members of the board, and especially Member Murawski. The Coalition for Students with Disabilities gives our deep, deep appreciation and gratitude for your leadership and support of this resolution. I am speaking, Angel Garcia should be speaking. She is so much better at this than I, but she didn't have time because she was working to sign up. But I will say a couple of things. You know, despite the fact that the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transsexual, gender-fluid community now is an acronym that includes a plus at the end, invisibility remains one of the greatest barriers for people and families of people, especially students, who identify in these ways, or who are members of this community but haven't had the tools or support to identify in these ways. So everything that this district and our educational leaders can do to see these students matters, just as Member Murawski so poignantly described. Lastly, what Angel would say is, please invest every dime that you can in mental health services that are specially trained to support these communities and intervene when signs of suicidal ideation or other harm, self-harm is apparent. Lift up, empower these students, and please improve our educationally-related mental health services, which are mandated to be provided to all students, including students with disabilities. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webster-Hawkins. Thank you, Member Murawski, for bringing this resolution, very important resolution to our board. I hope in our lifetime that we see a world where there isn't, we don't need a special month for, to be able to recognize these type of things, and there's inclusion for us all year round, and then in a world that we all love each other all the time. And so, in the long run, love wins. So thank you. Thank you for bringing this. I'd like to open this up for any board discussion. All right. Well, I'd like a, did you already make a motion? Sorry, Member Murawski, would you like to make a motion on this?
I may, I certainly will. So moved.
All right, I have a motion second. Student preference, I don't know, I'll have a favor, say aye. All right, thank you. Thank you for that. Item 9.0, public hearing, 9.1, public hearing, proposed fiscal year 2021 and '22 budget for all funds. Ms. Ramos, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, President Pritchett and board members, superintendent, members of the public. If we can please get the PowerPoint up, so we can get started. Thank you very much. Tonight, we're presenting to you the 2122 proposed budget. We have also presenting with us Adrian Vargas, our Assistant Superintendent Business, and Jessica Castillo, our Director of Accounting Services. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. For the agenda tonight, we'll go over briefly the reporting requirements, the May revise highlights, the 2021 estimated actuals, the 2122 proposed budget, some information on the fiscal recovery plan, and the 2122 multi-year projection, and we'll summarize with some potential risks, opportunities, and then we'll end with the hearing and, of course, questions and answer session. Next slide, please. So the financial reporting requirements for districts, as many of you have seen, are that prior to July 1 of each year, districts are required to adopt their budget. And we call this budget a tentative budget, because as you all know, it's based on the governor's May revised, his revisions from the January proposed budget. And we know that often after May revised, there is some, there are some changes. There's negotiations that occur behind the scenes and some fine tuning of some of those May revised items. And so, the state enacted budget may look different than the May revised, so we call this, you know, the tentative, although you do take action, which you'll do later this month, to adopt this budget. And that'll happen on the 24th of June. And so, what happens after the state enacts the budget, we review those changes, and if they're significant enough to present a material difference, then we present them to you within 45 days. But as has been common practice with the district, we have been bringing those revisions to you fairly within 45 days anyway, just to provide you with an update of what really materialized in the enacted budget. Next slide, please. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Vargas for his slides. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rose. So I just want to go through some of the May revise highlights that are included in the tentative budget. So we are including a 5.07% COLA for the local control funding formula. There's a 4.05% compounded COLA for special education funding. Also, part of the May revise, there's some one-time funding proposals for reopening of schools, expanded learning time, universal TK planning grant, community schools, comprehensive student supports, educator preparation, retention, and training, child nutrition, and broadband. Those funding proposals are not part of the proposed budget. However, the next two bullet points are, so we do have the cash deferral built in from June 2022 to July 2022, and also, there is no funding currently proposed for tiers and per increases. Next slide, please. And so, this slide basically highlights the estimated actuals. So our third interim was so close to our estimated actuals, not much changed on the unrestricted side. So we increased our ending fund balance by $33,000. We're projecting a surplus of $10.9 million with a projected ending fund balance on the unrestricted side of $95.6 million. The biggest change that happened since the third interim is our restricted ending fund balance increased by $98.3 million, and this is due to budgeting for SRR2, GEAR, and ELO funds, and basically recognizing the revenues that we're going to receive in the 2021 year. Our projected restricted surplus is at $96.2 million with the ending fund balance of $104.5 million, and that ending fund balance is high, because we did not budget expenditures related to those revenues for SRR2, GEAR, and the ELO funds. Next slide, please. And then, this part basically shows our enrollment trend, and the one thing I do want to remind all of us about is in 1920, our T-Beds enrollment was at 40,408. Our T-Beds enrollment for the current year, which is 2021, was 39,003 students. So we saw a drop of 1,405 students between 1920 and the current year. Our enrollment projections for the budget year, so for 2122, we are recognizing that we would recover at least half of those students. So our enrollment is going back up, our projected enrollment is going back up with a projection of 39,703 students. Next slide, please. And then, this slide basically highlights the funding per grade span, and as you can see, the increase with that, what they're calling a mega COLA, increases for each grade level. And so, as the adjusted base grant, you can see it ranges anywhere from $8,900 for K through third, all the way up to a little bit over $10,000 per ADA for our ninth through 12th ADA, and then you do the add-ons for your supplemental and concentration. So supplemental grant is you receive 20% more, and then for your concentration grant, you would receive 50% more per ADA. Next slide, please. So with that information, our projected 2122 LCFF is estimated at $430 million, $430.5 million. And again, just a reminder, we're using the 5.07% mega COLA. Also, we're projecting that we will stay at our 72% unduplicated people count, and also, because- And also, because we did not take attendance in the current year, we would be utilizing the 2019-20 ADA for our funding purposes. Next slide, please. And so, with that, this highlights our revenues on the unrestricted side at 443.8 million is our projection. And then, combined, which includes restricted resources, we are projecting 559.3 million. Next slide, please. And then, this is an overview of our expenditures by category. On the unrestricted side, we are projecting 354.4 million in expenditures, another 234 million on the restricted side, for a total of 588.4 million. And then, just one thing to highlight, there are no ESER III funds budgeted in the 2122 proposed budget. Next slide, please. And then, when it comes to our contributions and transfers out, as you can see, we are projecting a contribution for our special ed programs at 81.1 million. And then, our routine repair, our routine restrictive maintenance account, we're projecting a $17 million contribution. And then, for our transfers out, we are projecting a contribution to our charter fund specifically for George Washington Harbor at 266,000. Next slide, please. And then, this kind of highlights the, our education protection account. It is part of our LCFF funding. We're supposed to highlight how these funds are being used. And so, for EPA funds, we're projecting 76.8 million, and all those funds will go towards teacher salaries and benefits. Next slide, please. So, as a reminder, our March 4th board meeting, part of the Board Policy 3100, we shall consider any proposed use of one-time funding and take separate action to approve such uses. So, on the next slide, if you could move it, this highlights the different funding programs that are built into the 2122 proposed budget, and these are deemed one-time funds. So, as you can see, we're projecting 27.2 million of one-time funds being built in the proposed budget. Next slide, please. So, with all that, this slide highlights total revenues and total expenditures, both for unrestricted and restricted. The most important pieces that we're looking at is we're projecting a deficit on the unrestricted side of 6.7 million. We're projecting a deficit on the restricted side of 20.4 million, for a total deficit spend of 27.1 million dollars. And the one thing that I would note is the majority of that 20 million is part of those one-time funds related to ESER II, ELO, and the gear funds. Next slide, please. And then, this slide basically shows the remaining funds that are part of the district's financials, and their beginning fund balances, and then their net change, and then their projected ending fund balance. One thing I would note that this chart is updated, there is some key errors on the executive summary table, so the fund balance, beginning fund balances for Fund I, XII, and XXI are accurately reflected on this particular slide. So, with that, I will turn it back to Rose, and she'll talk about the fiscal recovery plan.
Thank you, Adrian. Next slide, please. And this slide here, board members, you may remember this one from the February 4th 21 board meeting. These items were part of the fiscal recovery plan that was presented to the board over the last year. And these are the items that were ultimately approved by the board for reduction effective July 1 of 2021. And the total of those items is 4.5 million dollars. So, we've divided them up just like we did when we presented these to you. The first section is those items that are the supplies, professional development, travel, transportation for the schools that were closed back in 2013, the college and career visits, site discretionary supplies. And then, the second section is not necessarily reducing these items, but we're transferring these expenses into COVID relief funds because they were deemed eligible to be funded by those sources. And so, since we have funds for the next few years for these items, those items will be funded there, but at that point, when these items, when these funding sources do expire, then the district will need to revisit the future plans for these. And we'll continue to keep these at the forefront, just as a reminder, so that as that date approaches, we have some alternative plans or other decisions to make about these line items. And then, finally, the last one is, the last reduction item on the list, is the preschool contribution of $564,000. And so, in total, that is the 4.5 million. Next slide, please. This is the other part of the fiscal recovery plan that were not approved for reduction effective July 1 of 21, but instead, the board did request staff to conduct further analysis in 2122. These programs and school sites are those that require additional funding and FTE above their base due to the size of these programs that are much smaller. And so, they're all listed here for you, and so, this is what staff will be doing in this coming year, and bringing back either recommendations for, you know, redesigning programs, or just relooking at, you know, how these programs are funded. Some more information to come here, but we just wanted, again, just to remind the public and the board that these items were not reduced in the coming year because they were considered to be programs that require further analysis. And with that, next slide, please. And at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Adrian.
All right, so I'm going to take you through the multi-year projection assumptions. And so, on the revenue side, we're projecting a 2.48% COLA for the 2223 year, and for the 2324 year, we're projecting a 3.11% COLA. And then, as a reminder, our enrollment projections include a 1% decline from 2122. And prior to COVID-19, our enrollment projected by a 0.5% or 200 students each year, but we used a 1% decline to be more conservative. So, with that being said, as a reminder, our enrollment for 2122 is 39,703. So, when we take 1%, we're looking at 39,295 for 2223, and then 38,901 for 2324. Again, we are projecting that we will maintain our 72% unduplicated pupil percentage. And then, on the restricted side, we are removing one-time federal and local carryover funds in the 2223 year, which is roughly about 6.2 million. Next slide, please. So, the next two slides will be about the assumptions related to the unrestricted and restricted expenditure changes. We're increasing step and column at 1.5% each year for certificated, and 1.8% for classified, and those amounts are in the parentheses, so 2.8 million for certificated, and 425,000 for classified. We are adjusting our contribution for the STIRS and PIRS increases. The projected total for both is 7.2 million in 2223, and 621,000 in 2324. And so, the next bullet points kind of highlight that in the 2223 year, we're accounting for a 2.18% difference for STIRS, and then no change in the 2324 year. And then, on the PIRS side, we're accounting for a 3.19% difference in the 2223 year, and a 1% difference in the 2324. So, that's why you see a large swing between both fiscal years. And then, for health, we're estimating for both the certificated and classified, an 8% increase, which is roughly 5.3 million in 2223, and then 5.7 million in 2223. And then, finally, on this particular slide, we are projecting a decrease in unemployment insurance because it went up in the 2122 year to 1.23%. So, with, using the school services DART board, we're projecting that that will go down to 1.2%. So, with that, we would see a potential savings of a little over $3 million. Next slide, please. And then, also built into the multi-year is an FTE reduction that's aligned to the enrollment decline. So, in 2223, that equates roughly to about 13.5 FTE. And then, in the 2324 year, we're projecting a 13 FTE, and basically, we're using a ratio of 30 to 1. Also, we are removing expenditures related to the federal and local carryover funds and gear funding in 2223. We are budgeting the remaining ELO funds in the 2223 year, and then removing those expenditures in the third year out, or the 2324 year. And again, there's no ESER III funds budgeted in our multi-year projections. And then, finally, our increases in special education total projection is 13 million over two years, so 6.4 million in 2223, and then another 6.6 million in 2325, which roughly equates to a 6.5% increase year over year. Next slide, please. So, with all those factors, here is the multi-year projection. So, with the proposed budget, there's that 6.7 million that I talked about earlier on the unrestricted side deficit in the 2122 year, and then the 20.4 million. And then, as you move across to the middle row or middle column, that is the projection for the 2223 year, and you can see that we're, our projection of our deficit spend goes up to 18.2 million. We're still seeing this deficit spending on the restricted side, but that, again, is related primarily to the one-time funds. We do have a slide after this that will show the difference, but you can see that we are deficit spending close to 31 million, or overall deficit spend of 49.2 million. And then, in the last column, that's the projection for the 2324 year. And again, you see our deficit spend on the unrestricted side go up to almost 25 million. And then, you see our restricted deficit spend drop to 14 million, and that's because we're pulling out the one-time funds. And so, for that combined year, the deficit spend is roughly 39 million. So, again, I'm pointing out that the multi-year projections show a continued deficit spend each year, and like I said, you can see it move from 6.7 to 18.2, and then to almost 25 million just on the unrestricted side of the budget. So, with that, the next slide, we pull out the ESER II funds, the gear funds, and the ELO funds. The deficit spend, as you can see, on the unrestricted side is relatively the same. It goes, it comes to a little over 7 million in the 2122 year. It's 18.3 in the second year, and then almost 25 million in the third year. So, on the unrestricted side, it is pretty stable. And then, as you can see, on the restricted side, we have a small deficit spend in the 2122 year, and that's us spending an ending fund balance program one time. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jesse, and he's going to talk about cash flow.
Thank you, Adrian. Good evening, President Pritchett, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar. This slide is an overview of our 202122 proposed multi-year cash flow projections. As you can see, as we move through each year, it's a pretty healthy cash flow balance. There's a couple of factors that went into this, one being that there's only one month of deferral scheduled, as Adrian mentioned previously in the presentation, that being for June 2022 being deferred to July 2022. And another factor that's helping is that we will be receiving the funds that were deferred in the current year of 2021, we'll start receiving that cash as we move through 2122. Next slide, please. Slide is an overview of our 202021 projected cash flow, so essentially, a recap of where we were almost a year ago in July 2020. As you can see, it is a significant change from where we are today. This particular projection showing only four months of positive cash flows in all three years, and this is due to a number of factors. One, at this time, there's conversations around 0% COLA in the current year and the subsequent years, as well as multiple months of deferrals planned for 2021, as well as 2021 and 2022. As you can see, we wanted to include this slide because it's a great illustration of how changes and assumptions at the state level can have a significant impact on, at the local level with our budget projections. As you saw, as we moved through the 2021 fiscal year, we provided updates on the changes and assumptions, and those were reflected in our interim reports. And fortunately, it has moved in a positive direction and have a healthier cash balance today than we do at that time. But again, just a great reminder of how, that it is a projection, and it is based off of change, assumptions at the state that can and will change. Next slide, please. This slide shows an overview of our LCFF funding growth versus our expenditure growth on a per ADA basis. So, if you take a look at the salmon-colored column, it is our local control funding formula revenue, increase per average daily attendance. And if you look at the multicolored columns, that is a snapshot of a few of our expenditure categories, and their increase per ADA in each fiscal year. As you can see, in 202122, it's a $524 increase in revenue per ADA, and a $506 increase in expenditures per ADA, and you can see how it flows through the two subsequent years as well. This slide is a good reminder that although it's great to have the mega COLA and see that additional revenue coming in, that we do continue to have the ongoing expenditures that increase year over year. As you can see, in the two subsequent years, those expenditures actually outpace our revenue on a per ADA basis. Also, again, a reminder of the challenge to balance revenue and expenditures. And also, keep in mind that this does not include other operating costs such as utilities, supplies, or other unexpected expenses that could occur in any given year, and it is exclusive of our COVID-19 relief funds. And with that, I'd like to pass it over to Rose. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. We can just stay on this slide for just a second, if we can just go back to that one. This is a really important slide, board members and members of the public, because you've heard a lot of information out there about the state's economy doing much better, and a lot of that improvement being passed on to school districts. And while we're very appreciative, and this is great news for us for several reasons, you saw Jesse's other slide on cash flow, where we were looking at just one year ago. It was a dramatic improvement from one year ago. However, for us, because we're such a large budget, and because our expenditures, like Jesse explained, continue to outpace the increases in revenue, we still have this deficit that we're grappling with. And this slide illustrates that. You'll see, you know, the first year, it looks pretty decent, you know, 524 approximately per ADA, and expenses are at 506. Assuming these were our only expenditure growths, we should be, you know, generating a surplus. However, you know, this expense column does not include all other operating costs that we do often see increasing, contract services and utilities, as Jesse explained. And so, this is just the result of the mega COLA. Then, we move on to the next year, and quickly, you start to see how the COLAs are pale in comparison to our expenditure growth. And again, this is based on assumptions that are provided to us from, you know, the state's May revised budget, and from the STIRS and PIRS, and from our step and column. So, it isn't information that we're generating just as, just to come up with some numbers on what our growth is. These are based on actual trends and actual information that is provided to us in developing our budgets. So, this is really important just to note that although the revenue is much... So this is really important just to note that although the revenue is much more relief for the district, it does not get the district out of its deficit situation because our expenses are growing at a much faster rate. And with that, next slide, please. And so our risks, again, we've seen this slide before, are the ongoing state funding for K-12. Right now, it looks very positive, but that can change. We are at, you know, at the, you know, we rely on the economy, the state economy doing well and whatever gets passed on to the state and assuming that the state is also going to decide to pass on significant increases to to school districts. So it's a risk. We have to wait and see what actually does come our way. And for us, another risk that we're facing possibly is this decline in enrollment. As you heard Adrian share earlier, we saw a decline of about 1,400 students and put it in perspective for our public that may not be aware, we had been trending only a decline of 200 students. So that's 1,200 students less that we were not prepared for. So our budget is very optimistic in assuming that half of those children are going to re-enroll in the fall. And although we're held harmless in this coming year, the risk is that in the following year, we are not. And so and if we don't generate and we don't bring those students back, then we'll see a significant decline in not only enrollment, but revenue, of course, and which would worsen our deficit. So right now, it's really important for everyone to note that our budget is built with the assumption that we will recover half of those students. And we'll continue to monitor that as the year progresses and we get more information on actual enrollment. And then again, the other risk is the unfunded COVID-related expenses like such as health benefits. And talking to our carriers, our provider, Keenan, we are learning that our health benefits did not increase as much. And you all know this, I'm not sharing information you are not aware of. This is due to a lower utilization rate that happened during the COVID year because of shelter in place. Individuals were just not visiting doctors and they were not going in for routine procedures and appointments. And so now that we are easing out of this COVID environment, our providers let us know that we should expect those utilization rates to increase substantially in this coming year and to be prepared. And so we're waiting for that information and right now, we're just assuming the lower increased rate. And so we'll keep you apprised of that as well. And then Adrian did share the unemployment insurance and STIRS and PERS increases because we still know that we have this unfunded liability statewide when it comes to pension accounts. The opportunities, of course, are that the economy continues to be as robust and do better and then that those funds are passed on to K-12 districts, that our enrollment is recovered and that we achieve finally fiscal recovery plan that's sufficient to restore the district's fiscal stability by eliminating this deficit. Next slide, please. And so in summary, just to recap what's happened for the district in the last three years, the district has had a budget that's not been approved by Sacramento County Office of Education for the last three years. And this is due to our deficit spending that has not been eliminated and our diminishing cash flow projections. Our cash flow projections in the past were so dire and grim that we were facing possibly a state loan. And this was a just projections that the district came up with on our own as we have shared with you. We want to continue to reinforce that. And because we know that school finance and the accounting and the budget piece is very convoluted and complex and sometimes it's not easily digestible by our public and our parents. But it's really important that, you know, everyone understand that these cash flow projections and that the budget projections are based on actual information that we receive from our state and we receive from our local advisory groups. And so a year ago, as you saw that slide, our cash flow was being projected to be pretty much diminished to a point of zero where we were going to need a state loan. But things turned around dramatically in this next year. And so we updated our budget like we should. So it's not uncommon to see a budget look one way and by the time you get to the end of the year, your numbers actually look quite different. And actually, what we're doing, we're doing our job in updating our budget and making sure that the numbers do reflect what's actually happening within the district and then those external actors that impact our numbers. And so our board graciously approved a fiscal recovery plan as difficult as that was. Those are all cuts to our district are very difficult. And these cuts were $4.5 million on May 4. Prior to this, in the last few years, the district had made reductions already in excess of $50 million in ongoing. And they're all very difficult reductions to make. So to find in additional ones, you know, it is a challenge. And so therefore, and it's still not enough. You know, this last bullet, you know, emphasized that, that we still need $25 million in ongoing in an ongoing solution in order to achieve fiscal solvency and eliminate the deficit spending. And again, this is just based on the information we have at this time. And, you know, we'll continue to bring you updates. And so this pretty much concludes a summary of the proposed budget for the coming year. And at this point, I will turn it over back to the board.
Thank you, Rose and team. We appreciate that. This is a first reading of this presentation and first we have five public comments.
Yes, our first public speaker is Alan Cox. I do not see him online currently. Our next speaker is Daniel Darby.
Good evening, board and superintendent. I would like to direct you to in the budget document that you hopefully have in front of you, to PDF page 24, or if you have the physical document, it's page 21. Second paragraph from the top, last sentence says, "Therefore, an ongoing budget solution is still required in order for the district to achieve fiscal solvency and avoid a state loan." I find that statement to be impossible with the numbers that have been presented tonight. At the end of the 23, 24 school year, you will have a surplus of unrestricted of 46 million or combined with restricted of 85 million. In addition, the lowest cash flow month that I saw in the report was 76 million. How can we even have a sentence like that in this report when it does not, the data does not support that sentence whatsoever? The only thing I can conclude is that we are trying to sow fear and doubt within the community and I find that unacceptable. Secondly, I find something even more disturbing in this report. It's that we are going to continue funding PSAT and SAT tests. Now, the University of California and the Cal State schools have made that test optional for students in their admission and scholarship applications. They have determined after a multi-year study that in the University of California Border Region's own words, that the test is racist. I find it unconscionable that this district passes resolutions that are basically meaningless about being equitable and against racism. Yet, when it comes to spending their dollars, they are more than willing to spend their money on supporting a racist institution in terms of the PSAT and the SAT test. So again, in the university border with the words of the University of the Border California, this is a racist metric and we should not be supporting it. And I do not want my tax dollars supporting racism. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, our next speaker is David Fisher.
Hi, and I'm combining my time with Nikki Malesky. The district's budget projections are a major reason why 96.1% of teachers and 97.4% of classified express no confidence in the superintendent and administrative team. Rather than present accurate description of the district's finances and present a realistic view of budget projections, as it has been for the last four years under the superintendent's leadership, the district continues to attempt to mislead the public. At a recent school board meeting, for example, school board president Christina Pritchett stated that previous deficit spending had been documented by quote auditors. That can be easily refuted by simply verifying the district's own budget documents, the unaudited actibles that are available on the district's website. Since the local control funding forum was introduced in California, the district has ended nine of the last 10 years with a surplus in its unrestricted funds. You can look it up. Go to the website. Look at the look at the unaudited actibles. You will find 2013, 14, you have $17 million surplus. 14, 15, $9.9 million surplus. 15, 16, 28, 28 million surplus. 16, 17, 4.7 million surplus. In 17, 18, the district actually had a deficit, but only because the superintendent cashed out 6 million in vacation payouts for top administrators, added administrator positions and other unbudgeted expenses. In 18, 19, when the superintendent claimed the district was months away from fiscal insolvency, the district ran a surplus of almost $1 million. In 19, 20, again, another surplus, this time 23.5 million. And finally, in 2021, after projecting a budget deficit of 75 million in its unrestricted fund, the district's in its third interim budget project will end the year with 10.9 million surplus. How does the district explain the growth in its reserve fund from 12.8 million in 12, 13 to over 100 million if it's been operating a structural deficit? It's a mathematical impossibility to run deficits and increase your reserve fund. It's just impossible. And yet, here we are once again with the superintendent and chief business officer, the only two employees in the entire district whose salary schedules have been increased since 2019, painting a misleading picture. Ms. Ramos admits that many of the significant increases in the district budget as a result of governor nuisance May revise are not in the district's 21, 22 budget due to their timing. She also admits that district's state budget reserve caps will occur, requiring the districts like Sac City that have a reserve fund that exceeds 10% to spend down the excess reserve. Accordingly, the budget presented does not account for millions the district will have available to spend over the next three years. Even with this gloom and doom, the district still meets the standard for passing a budget with a positive certification by ending each year with substantially more than the 2% minimum unrestricted reserve that is required to meet. That's why this budget approval is even more significant. SCOE has had fiscal oversight in this district since 2018. SCOE has been there when the district forgot to count five schools. It's been there when the district's budget projections were so wildly off. Together with Jackie Canfield, who remains a highly paid consultant in the district, SCOE fiscal oversight cost the district approximately $500,000 a year. District's finances are substantially better than they were in March when a majority of the board rejected the false projections from the superintendent and the CBO and SCOE. This budget should be passed with a positive certification to finally give our community a more honest picture of the district's finances. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Yes, our next and final speaker on this item is Ingrid Hutchins.
Hello, I'll be combining my time with Alan Cox. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, did Alan Cox put in a card?
He did and you called on him and he didn't answer because he's given a time.
Go ahead, go ahead, Hutchins.
Thank you. Good evening again. Our district has put a great deal of effort into saving for a rainy day and giving two highly paid administrators five-figure raises. None of that is for the students. The students we have today are missing out on receiving materials, programs, smaller class sizes, nurses and psychologists. So you can pack the coffers and raise the income of people who don't work directly with the students. I hope that parents start to voice their concern that political gain is preventing their children from receiving the benefit of money that the district receives to educate them. Let me reframe that so that my words are clear. The money that should be used to give each child a top-notch education is currently being skimmed to overinflate what's being held for some unforeseeable future and to give large pay raises to the very same people who are trying to convince us that there's a fiscal crisis. It's also being used to pay outside counsel for the school district, even though they have in-house attorneys to represent them. It's being used to pay a negotiator a very generous salary, even though she isn't given the power to make the types of decisions that would move our negotiations forward in an expeditious manner. Our students deserve all that we can offer, but I'd like to highlight just a few of the items that are especially important as we turn to school full-time in the fall. We must have a virtual academy for families who choose to keep their students at home. Make no mistake, concurrent instruction is educational malpractice. It is your responsibility to create a dynamic virtual education model that staffs dedicated teachers to provide instruction for distance learners. We also need to reduce class sizes across the board. Studies have proven that reducing class sizes has a direct impact on student success. The district needs to provide teachers with the programs that they have been begging for for years. Classroom teachers know what the students need and shouldn't be consulted instead of ignored. These are the types of expenditures that the board should have insisted upon before providing large raises to the very people who claim there's a fiscal crisis. Since it's your job to provide oversight, we expect you to protect the interests of our students over the interests of administrators. We are in a unique position due to COVID funds coming to the district. We have an opportunity to create the learning environments that our students deserve. It's time to tighten up your oversight of our budget before today's students lose out on tomorrow's phantoms. Thank you.
Thank you. A reminder, board, this is the first reading. I'll open it up for board discussion. Student member Shay and member Garcia.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments and I have a couple of clarifying questions. Before I get into my clarifying question, I just feel like it's insulting our intelligence to at this point still be having the debate that we heard in public comment over whether there's a deficit or not and whether we're all being victims of some hoax perpetrated by political interest. I don't know which political interest. But I understand that there will be lines looking at slide 26 and I would appreciate if we could put that up. Slide 26 sort of saying, oh, you know, you guys keep projecting the future years having less revenues and more expenditures. So I would love if we could sort of go over again in a little bit more depth the nuances of slide 26. First, first of all, why is the ADA funding falling so dramatically in the next year, Mr. Estio?
Yes, I can answer that. Or Jesse, do you want to go ahead and take that?
You can go ahead. Thank you, Rose.
Okay, they're falling dramatically, board member Shay, because the projected COLA in the out-years is less than the mega COLA. And so we are only getting the percentages that were shared on slide. Let me see if I can make sure that everyone's on that same page. Slide, sorry about that. Let me slide this presentation. If we go to slide 19, really quick, just so I can. Thank you. So we're projecting the projected COLA for LCFF in the 22, 23 year is 2.48%. And in 23, 24, it's 3.11. And as you might recall, this for the coming year, the May rebuys included a mega COLA of the 5%, the 5.07%. And so if we go back to slide 26, what you're seeing there is those colas in 21, 22, that's your 5% and then your lower percent of the 2.48 in the 22, 23 and then a little bit of a bigger than the 2.4, 3.11 in 23, 24. So that's what those bars represent is the increase in revenue per ADA for LCFF. And then the columns that are right next to those revenues, next to those seven columns, those represent the cost increases per ADA in the major categories of expenditures for the district. It's not all inclusive of all expenditures, but it includes those big items like special ed. It includes our step-in column, our personnel costs, our PERS and STIRS, our pensions, and then our STIRS at the bottom. And so those are increasing at a higher rate than the rate of revenue we're receiving. So it's kind of like the equivalent of, let's say, your own personal operating expenses at home, your own personal budget that you are getting, you're projected to increase your personal budget because maybe for whatever reason, you're seeing an increase in your utility costs for your area or, you know, the cost of food and gas has gone up dramatically and will be projected to go up over the next few years, but you're not getting any pay raises at work or you're getting a minimal pay raise. It's not even enough to cover those cost increases. And so you're going to be short every month because you're not going to bring home enough revenue or income to offset your increasing expenses. And this is the equivalent. And so this slide really does tell the story of the district's deficit. This is what's happening with this. We might have a lot of surplus. It's like you can have a lot of money in the bank, a lot for a rainy day. And that's what our reserves are really are. They are these balances that have been left there from unspent or one-time monies. But at some point, if you continue along this same model of lower increased revenues and increased expenses, at some point, you're going to run out. And that just hasn't happened for the district. It hasn't happened. It hasn't happened in the last couple of years. We have been projecting to do so based on the information we had, but who was to know that COVID was going to happen? And we were going to have this huge amount of savings and operating costs because we had to unfortunately close schools. Who was to know that we were going to get all this one-time money and federal dollars to address COVID? And so that's what's really shored up our reserves and made them look substantially higher. And so I know I said a little bit more, member Shayk, but I just wanted to kind of add a little bit of context to that. I hope that helped.
No, no, thank you, Ms. Ramos. That's exactly, I feel like this slide illustrates the structural deficit in a really, really important way. And so just to dumb this down, and you can let me know if I'm saying something wrong, but we have saved on operating costs the past two school years because of COVID. In addition to that, there's an unprecedented mega COLA, cost of living adjustment from the state's budget may revise. That's giving us a lot more money this year than we can expect in future years. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Got it. And then just out of a little bit confusion, I see that our pensions, the pers and stirs are minimal in the 2023 to 24 year. Could you just explain that?
Yes, and those are the rate, that's again, the increase. The increase from 22 to 23, 2223 to 2324 is not as great as the increase from the prior year to 2223. And so that's why that bar is just a little bit. But it doesn't mean that that represents our total cost. It's just the increase in cost from the prior year.
Got it. So it's just increasing at a slower rate than the previous two years?
Correct.
Got it. And then I have a couple of other things. For one, on a personal note, I am going to college outside of this state in a little bit over two months. And a big part of the reason was that I was able to take a PSAT and SAT on the district's dime. And it streamlined the process. I didn't have to go out and get a waiver. It was already taken at school. And so as much as I have concerns about the college board, and I do, I promise you, and I have problems with the way that the test is given nowadays, I did want to point out that SAC City students should not be limited to just going to school within the state because our colleges are saying we don't need the SAT. And also, the fact that numerous studies have come out in recent months pointing to the fact that when you're looking at these class and race metrics, the kids who have the privilege and the resources are able to have their essays hammered and picked at and made excellent, whereas these tests are a lot more helpful to advantage students lower on the scale of the socioeconomic ladder because they're able to sort of objectively, with all the caveats, show their ability academically. And so I just wanted to say that I'm very grateful that that's part of our budget. Something else that I would like to revisit is the fiscal recovery plan, specifically the 288,000, I think that's the right number. It's not in front of me. The 288,000 number, which is the cut we made to college and career visits. With all the money sloshing in, I mean, we're hiring people to spend it, and we are sort of using one-time dollars as a placeholder for some of these items. I just wonder if there's any way superintendent or Rose or anyone that we could preserve that item for the coming year and have the board take action to remove that from our FRP cuts.
Certainly, member Shayk, this is the appropriate time for those suggestions and some of that guidance and direction to be provided to us as staff. So we will certainly look into that. Part of our challenge, as you know, is that we would need to make sure that we have the right resources from a human resources perspective as well to make sure that those are organized, that they're done with fidelity, that we can ensure that all students are given an opportunity to sign up, make sure that kind of just from a logistical perspective, all of that is done. What we found is that, you know, our schools are very busy, and we want to make sure that we would be able to have something that consensually support our schools so that it's not all being done at the school site level, organizing campus visits, visits to businesses, tying it to college and career readiness. For example, we know that it does take some effort, so we will certainly look into that based on your request.
Thank you, Superintendent. And yeah, I just feel because we're heading back to normal or hopefully better than normal, this is a really important part as the country opens up for our students to be out in the world, seeing what their options are post-graduation. I know that's something we're going to be discussing on the ALCAP item. And so that's something I really hope we can look at. And with that, I look forward to hearing my colleagues' questions.
If I can just interject very quickly, President Pritchett. At the meeting on the 24th, of course, you will take action on the adoption of an all-funds budget. But we also did commit to provide more detailed information about some of the investments using one-time funds. And if you remember, one category that we outlined last week was related just to social capital and providing social capital experiential programming for our students. And so the idea of exposing our students to those types of activities in the college and career readiness kind of venues will be something that we try to capture in that kind of social capital bucket, if you will, because we do have wonderful opportunities to provide those social capital opportunities to all of our students that I've been very blessed to be able to offer my own children, but my parents couldn't offer to me, so I know the benefits of those kinds of experiences. And if I could just also say, member Pritchett, because we were going through the presentation as quickly as we could, I do want to recognize that board members did ask for a multi-year projection calculation that included all funds versus one that removed those funds. So I'm hoping that board members will want to ask our staff for more detailed information of slides 22 and 23. Our staff did put a lot of effort into those two slides. And to member Shayk's question related to slide 26, I do think that slides 22 and 23 deserve some discussion by our board so that our community has a clear sense of the difference between those two slides. They are really, really critical.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Garcia and then member Phillips.
Yes, thank you. So I want to thank staff for the work, the detailed work in the presentation. I did ask for a separation of the multi-year projections, one with and one without. I think it's just really important to understand sort of what the net impact is between those two. But I will come back to that. I did want to ask staff maybe a general question. We know what is in the budget as you described it, but on multiple occasions, you also mentioned that S R 3 dollars are not in this budget. So can you talk a little bit about why they're not in this budget and when we might see them included, you know, in layman's terms if possible? And then just wonder, just also wondering, what else is not in this budget before us?
Yes, yes, we can. I mean, I'm going to let Adrian talk about that. Adrian, do you want to share that information, please?
Sure. So S R 3, there's a couple of things. One, S R 3 came out in late May. And so actually, just kind of looking through S R 3's setup, we have a plan or a template that needs to be developed. But also, just even tracking the resources or the technical piece of it, there is a code, but it's not even available to look at on the CD website. So with that being said, that is one of the reasons why it's not in there. But the other one is just they have the spending plan related to that. And so as we go through the budget, I would anticipate that we would at least reflect that with our unaudited actuals because we're also going to have to recognize the revenue of, I think it's, I believe it's somewhere in the range of 150 million for S R 3 in our 2021 fiscal year. So that would be my anticipation of everything flowing through our financial statements. But of course, if we have expenditures to budget, we could put that in maybe at a 45-day revise, but most certainly with the unaudited actuals because we are going to have to recognize that revenue in our year-end closing documents.
Okay, that makes sense. But I just kind of wanted to get an idea of why it wasn't included and when we might see it included. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the fiscal recovery plan. Slide, I think it's, I printed my slides in a weird order, so 18, here we go. 1718. So along the lines of board member Shayk's sort of thought process in terms of, you know, what is in the fiscal recovery plan that could take a second, that could potentially be reconsidered is the preschool program. I know that this budget, just for confirmation, does not include the $564,000 general fund contribution that it has required in past years. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, member Garcia.
Okay, so I think it's also my understanding that if this contribution isn't made, that essentially it decimates the program. Is that also correct?
Member Garcia, I will ask Director Jackie Bonini, who's joined us, to make sure that she can give the board kind of a fuller picture of what that would mean. So if Ms. Bonini is available?
I'm here. Thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, that not decimate, but it includes, it pays for some significant and important members of our staff. And we would have a very difficult time opening our classrooms without those members. I have 42 childcare attendants that are paid for out of that general fund, and I need them to open up the classroom.
Okay, 42 out of how many?
I have 42 classrooms, and each one of those classrooms require a childcare attendant to break the staff.
Okay, so it impacts the program greatly?
It does.
Okay, so I'd like to ask or propose that this program be included in the budget that we see next time. And specifically, you know, I'd like to see it included at least for one year. And I would also like to ensure that this program be included in the items for further discussion that are listed in slide 18. And because the state is having a very interesting conversation, the state is moving in the direction of funding transitional kindergarten. And I think in the past, we've talked about a needed conversation of a more comprehensive early childhood education program or plan, the strategic plan for the district on how the district might be able to serve both three- and four-year-olds. And I just don't think that conversation has happened yet. So I'd like to make sure that, again, that we include the preschool contribution into the budget that comes before us in a couple of weeks and that this essentially will buy us one year to have this conversation about how the district might be able to serve both three- and four-year-olds, recognizing that the program as it's currently structured is not fiscally solvent. Right now, it is too expensive to run, and this program is a reimbursement program. The state just doesn't reimburse the district at the level that it needs. So I just want to make sure that I state that as well. I also wanted to ask on slide 18, on all the programs that are on this list for further analysis that will now include preschool, what is the timeline for those programs or that analysis to come back to the board?
Thank you for your question, member Garcia. We are going to be putting together that work group over the summer. There's actually some other areas that we've also thought about that are very relevant, I think, and that we should be proactive in addition to those lists. And I can include, for example, dual immersion. There have been continued calls for us to think about how to look at a K-12 dual immersion program. And I always recognize districts that are committed to dual immersion, and most of the time, they are thought of as a program that goes through sixth grade, and that's generally what we have here. And so we are thinking of putting together a work group over the course of the summer with individuals that oversee currently some of those programs and have a lot of ideas. And of course, we would, in terms of the timeline, it's going into the budget adoption process as quickly as we can. I would say probably in the first interim period report, we could give some feedback to the board on a regular basis of what that work group is looking at, what it's studying. And that's where we're thinking right now. It would be a work group that we're putting together for a variety of these areas. So again, I include dual immersion as another area that I think deserves that same kind of attention, is how do you expand it? How do you make it a K-12 effort as opposed to just a program where you go through sixth grade and then we don't really have anything to bridge into the high school years either? Not because it's part of the FRP, but because we're going to continue to have those calls from our community because we should have thought about it as a K-12 effort.
Right, absolutely. I think that makes a whole lot of sense, and I look forward to hearing that. It also will enable more of our students to graduate with a seal of by literacy. So go send, and I have a couple more questions. I also wanted to ask the question about, we know that this, what's before us is based on the May revise that's going to change. The legislature will adopt their budget by the 15th of June. And so we're going to hear, we're going to adopt our budget on June 24th. So I'm wondering, when do we get to see what what the net positive impact of our ongoing unrestricted general fund budget looks like? I'm trying to get an idea of what, how much more the district will have on an ongoing basis, especially as the district enters into successor negotiations with multiple bargaining teams. I'm just really trying to understand, I'm really trying to wrap my head around the number. Do we know when that type of information will come before us? Is it next on the 24th, or is it for the material revisions?
If I can ask Ms. Ramos, especially just being sensitive to the fact that we have three new board members that are going through this process for the first time, member Garcia. Remember, Ms. Rose mentioned it very quickly at the beginning, but Ms. Rose, if you can just explain, I know that we're also joined by partners at SCOWE, and just kind of explain a little bit more the opportunity of coming back 45 days after budget adoption and why that's a critical milestone for our community to understand?
Sure, I definitely can, Superintendent. And I believe you just, you said it briefly, and that's what it is. We have 45 days after the board adopts the budget to bring back to you. We have 45 days after the board adopts the budget to bring back to you material revisions to the budget. But of course, we will share with you any significant updates that are in the state enacted budget, and we're assuming that the state is going to enact it. There's nothing to say that they will not, but, you know, we have to wait and see what they are actually going to, what that date is. And I'm sorry, it's 45 days after the state enacts the budget. I believe Terry's on the line. I get, I toggle back and forth between the date when we approve our budget, because as you know, long in his, actually not that long ago in history, it would take the state sometimes a little longer beyond June. There were some years where they weren't adopting a budget or enacting a budget until July. So we would have 45 days after that time period. But we can certainly share information sooner. We will not have a formally revised budget for you until, you know, roughly about 45 days, which would be in August sometime in that timeframe.
Okay, just needed to make sure that, you know, I knew when we were going to see something a little bit more solid, especially as, again, as the district is, and, you know, having these conversations on successor contracts. And then I also wanted to just maybe ask, SCOWI's on the line?
Yes, Mr. Schweitzer and Ms. Ryland are on the line, Member Garcia.
Yeah, so I don't know who this one, who gets to answer this one, but I mean, we did hear a public comment about this as well, is the budget before us is, you know, on solid footing. I mean, we are, we do deficit spend, and we have a lot in one-time funds. But yes, my point is that, is it, or my question is, is it safe to tell our community that we're no longer in an imminent state takeover? That we are, we still have a lot of work to do to close that deficit spending, but that we are not going to be taken over by the state, by the state in at least three years?
Yeah, so this is Nick Schweitzer from Associate Superintendent Sacramento County Office of Education. Yes, so based on these numbers, the district does have sufficient reserves, certainly for the coming year and, you know, through the next two years, to maintain solvency, although just putting it out there again, as I've known, you've heard from me and Superintendent Gordon in the past, we remain very, very concerned about the structural deficit that the district is carrying.
Okay, okay, so I think that's important for our community to understand that, you know, there's work to be done, but we are no longer on the verge of insolvency, so that the community, you know, can have a little bit more certainty in terms of the direction or, in terms of our fiscal health. And then, lastly, I did want to go back to another comment that was made about SATs and PSATs. I would love nothing more than to not have students take these exams, especially because we know that, you know, they're not, they don't measure fairly, they're not necessarily exams for students of color. But the reality is that not every single college or university has done away with them. So it does limit opportunities for many of our students. Many of our students in California cannot go to a California college or university. It's just really hard, so they have to often consider out-of-state universities, just like our student board member, not, I think, because he had to, but it's another option. Now, I do, I do have this maybe thought in my head, and I hope that you help me clarify. I think for the students this year, especially for the 11th graders who were not able to take the S back, the SAT is going to be critical for them for next year as seniors, as they're applying to colleges and universities. So I just, I don't know if that's, somehow I have that in my head, I heard it somewhere, that it's ever more critical, even more critical to fund the SAT for seniors next year, because they won't have that S back score, because our district opted to provide a different assessment. So I don't know if that's, how many students will be in that particular situation in our district. I just want to make sure that I do agree, I wish we didn't have to pay for these, but right now, it's just, it would be unfairly limiting the opportunities of many of our students, especially those that are first in their families to go to college.
Thank you, Member Garcia. And I would also just mention to the board and to our community that we think of these as useful assessments that give us information that is useful for other purposes as well. For example, the PSAT allows us to identify students that have the potential to enroll in AP courses. And so we think that from a master scheduling perspective, it helps us have a better understanding in the eighth-grade PSAT, for example, and really just open up opportunities for students who might have circumstances where they may not be aware that they could perform well in more advanced coursework, for example. Would be very open to coming back to the board and bringing folks that have deeper knowledge and can answer questions related to the degree of alignment between a PSAT test score and how they use that information to get back to us and let us know which students, for example, should be offered the opportunity to enroll in those advanced courses. So I would just, I would just ask that we all think about this, not just for the purpose of whether or not it is useful for the University of California or for the CSU system, but for other purposes that I still think have strong linkages to advancing an equity and an access agenda, if you will, from the perspective of providing greater opportunities to students. And again, I'm not talking about those of us who have experienced and went through that process and would do, and would advocate for our own children to have those opportunities, but for many of our families who don't understand that those are also data points that are given back to us, that they have access to, with the hope that they too will advocate for those same opportunities for their children.
So the SAT and PSAT tests are, they do truly fit into the category of being racist, and even though, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Superintendent, is that it does provide opportunity, it does not provide opportunity for all. So even though we want to utilize it to find children who might go into an AP program, it's not necessarily equitable, because it's not bringing it to those who may actually be able to benefit. So we have to be careful with those particular tests, but that was just a comment. I, Trustee Garcia covered a lot, no, uh-uh, nope, go right ahead. But on the preschool, I guess our fiscal recovery, I forgot what page it was on. So we've moved preschool contribution as well as college and career visits into the further analysis? Or what have we moved?
No. Member Garcia, would you like to clarify your request?
Yes, I have asked that the preschool be included in the budget as we're going to fund it for one more year, and for it, for the issue to also be included in the further analysis to find out how we can move forward beyond getting funded next year.
Okay, but it's not specifically the fiscal recovery plan analysis on the next page?
I see, yeah. I think, Member Phillips, so you're looking at Slide 18?
17 and 18.
17 and 18, yeah. So one way of thinking about it, as we presented it, is that the programs on Slide 18 are programs that will require us to do some further analysis so that we get to a place of recommending to the board a set of programs that don't require additional investment from our unrestricted general funds, and therefore, we're going to come back to the board with updates on what changes might we make so that we can reduce the need to invest from our unrestricted general funds. The child development contribution, Member Garcia is asking that we remove from the original decision that the board made to reduce the investment that we have to make to keep it going. And as I look around the room, we will then, over the next two weeks, include that investment, basically, so that that program can continue for the next year, understanding that that will impact the multi-year and the structural deficit, but that's a decision point for the board to make. And then the college visit, I think what student board member Shayk was saying was that he would like to see us provide those opportunities to students. I will say that on that one, we may include, if appropriate, as part of one-time funds so that we don't use unrestricted general funds and extend our structural deficit. I will work with our staff to see if that's a possibility, because we would be able to do it for the next year and not have the same impact that we don't want on the structural deficit. So that, those are the two, the two items, as I understood them, and I'm open to, we want to be, we want to clarify any questions so that our staff can prepare for the budget adoption in two weeks.
Okay, so Board Member Shayk asked that we, or I'm asking if you did, ask for the college visits to be added to the budget or to be figured into the budget so that we can see how that worked?
Yeah, I'm trying to see if staff can find a way for us to pay for that for one year at least.
Okay, so that's preschool and college and career visits that we're going to look at in the budget to see if it can work.
Correct.
And, you know, I, I don't know, I, I look at all, the fiscal recovery plan that we voted on in, I think it was March, February, can't remember. February, when we voted on that, we found it very difficult to make cuts. So we're at the point now where we have millions and millions of dollars that we still need to correct in this fiscal, the fiscal budget issue that we have. What else are we supposed to cut? Where else are we supposed to cut things? How are we supposed to make this work? Because if we're, I mean, we can look at our budget and say it might be okay for us to look solvent in the, for the next three, three school years, but we know those numbers are going to continue to be adjusted, and if they're continuing to be adjusted, whenever, we are basically just kind of bailing our way out of every, every year. So I mean, I, maybe there are some suggestions, I don't know what else we're supposed to cut, other than, you know, take over some austerity measures. Have we considered, you know, some austerity measures to come down and have, have those been, sorry, presented to the board? Because I, you know, I know it comes down to basically benefits and salaries, but, you know, austerity measures might not be able to bring it as low as we want without hurting the folks who are educating our children. So maybe there's a way that we could maybe have staff break into that a little, worst-case scenario, so that we can really see what we need to deal with, instead of, you know, putting Band-Aids on a gunshot wound, because it feels like that's what we're doing.
I think that's a, that's a fair assessment, Member Phillips, which is why I think, again, that Slide 22 and 23 are so critical for our board and for our community to understand, because on the one hand, both of those slides show pretty clearly that we are still going to be operating on a deficit, and were it not for these one-time funds, Member Garcia's adjective of imminent would not have gone away, basically. And so we've removed the term imminent because we have these one-time funds, but those two slides really do capture the amount by which we are still deficit spending. And I'm hopeful that, again, we just kind of spend time studying those two, those two slides. Member Garcia reminded me that it was, it was she who asked for this, and for me, those two slides are slides that I'm, that I'm hopeful that our board will. And we're, of course, always prepared. We'd be happy to spend organized two-bys so that we can kind of walk the board through this very, very carefully, so that you can explain to all of our families the significance of those two slides.
So can we make sure that when we're having this reviewed with us, or when it is reviewed, that we're addressing the restricted funds? Because unrestricted, I'm sorry, restricted needs to be what we're not focusing on, because those are our one-times for the most part. So I, it's almost like there's too much information here. And every time I look at this, I'm like, that's great and all, but I really want to see what we're dealing with, what our actual problem is, so that we can deal with it, you know, head-on, instead of looking at this extra money. Because if we're talking about it and folks calling in are still talking about, you know, 300 million, why aren't we spending it? If that's what we cannot spend, we need to stop talking about it as if it is something and part of our budget. So I would just, I would appreciate that the next time we go over this, that it's written in a way that we can not only understand, but also include the only information that we need, not too much of the other fluff.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. We will follow up, Member Phillips, on whether two-bys might be the most appropriate venue, or whether we should just be talking about a different way of communicating all of these numbers, because I agree, they are, they are a lot of numbers, and I want to make sure that our board and our community, in the end, understands what you're referring to with respect to restricted and unrestricted, and where do we have flexibility, and where does it matter, and where does it not matter at the end of the day.
Right. And I also just want to ask, maybe if it's possible, when presentations are given, that we have an opportunity to ask questions during the presentation. Storing them up until the end kind of takes them out of context when we're asking them. So I'm hoping, I'm not sure if, you know, Ms. Ramos would be able to do that completely, but it would help if, when we have the question while we're in that slide, that we can ask that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Phillips. I just want to remind the board, we're about an hour, hour forty minutes over. Superintendent, I do want to ask that you set up two-bys with Ms. Ramos, with board members, and thank you for asking the question, Member Phillips, about, you know, what else can we look at? Because I think we're all kind of wondering that same thing, and I think it's important to note of the 8% healthcare increase. We've been talking many, many years on this board about the cost of healthcare within our district, and I think that's not going to fix the big picture, right? But that's a large portion of it, and I think with COVID, we're going to see the cares, you know, not cares, that's, let me back up. The people that received care because of COVID, we're going to see even large increases, larger increases in healthcare. So I think that's probably one of the biggest elephant in the room of what we need to speak about. Member Morowski?
We're an hour and a half, or hour forty minutes, or we'll do two-bys. Thank you very much. I just, I think it's important just because, and I'll try to be quick, but we have, you know, we have to adopt the budget next, next meeting, so I think we have to have this conversation tonight about a couple of these things. So I first, but also wanted to just sing the praises of Ms. Ramos and the team she's assembled, and, you know, it's an absolute pleasure to work with all of you, and I just really want to address head-on the, you know, that I am actually pleased that we could realign her salary to be commensurate with her increased responsibility. She took on essentially an extra high-level position in our district, which not only, you know, we are paying a strong, competent women of color the salary that her experience and job duties would command in the marketplace, which is competitive, and also saving the district money. So I just, I appreciate Ms. Ramos, the job that you, that you're doing. I would, you know, be happy to do that again if it came up, and I just really want to call that out publicly, because I think it can be very demoralizing to, to our staff to, to hear. to our staff to hear some of the things that get said. So I just wanted to set the record straight on that, so I appreciate your indulgence. I'll be very quick with the rest of it. Just wanted to echo Board Member Garcia's comments about the preschool contribution. I really do agree with the process, putting it into the further analysis bucket. And I do think, you know, based on the way that program is structured, it is very difficult to find fiscal sustainability. It may, we may just be talking about a phase out of the program in favor of some other model, but I think we need that year to look at it. And also with COVID and a lot of women being forced out of the workplace and, you know, childcare really being decimated, I think this year is not the time to do that. So I do agree with putting that back in the budget for one year, and just being explicit about that while we work on a transition plan. Also appreciate member Shayk's comments and look forward to seeing that explained more about what is actually in the budget. And that was the other kind of overall comment I had. I had a really difficult time understanding kind of the programmatic impact of the budget, like what all is in here? Like, what are we doing with the dollars? I know that there are some federal dollars that are in the budget. There's some federal dollars that we'll be accounting for later that will get into this next year's budget. So I really just did want to emphasize that I, you know, as we discussed, I think we expect more detail on all of those expenditures with our one-time funds. And I did want to thank staff for, you know, taking the one-time funds. The one-time funds were listed out very clearly, but the expenditures, like what the uses of those funds were not listed out as clearly. So I really think, you know, to be consistent with the policy that we adopted, we really need to have both of the, you know, both the funds and the expenditures, and to take that separate action to approve those. And I just really appreciate the work that went into breaking those things out and the transparency around that. I guess one other thing I wanted to say about the one-time funds and the, you know, we're doing a lot around addressing learning loss. And I think we need to be clear that we need common district assessments to be able to spend those dollars effectively. So I just think that's a fundamental principle that we need to ensure going into that. So I don't know what that looks like in terms of how you structure the budget around that, because I think at some level, it needs to be... The allocation of funding needs to be reliant on having the common district assessments. Otherwise, we are not going to be able to hold the superintendent accountable for doing the job that we want him to do. We're not going to be able to tell whether the money is being effectively spent, and then we're not going to know for the following year, you know, whether we target it effectively. So I just really think that that has to be incorporated. And so I just encourage staff to think about, how do we do that to make sure that, you know, that we're using money effectively? And we just need that data. We can't do an MTSS without that data. So, and so that's, I guess that's it for my comments. I had a quick question for Scoey that I think, you know, I think most of us would be interested in just having some clarity on, and that is just the criteria we need around budget approval. I know that, you know, we've had disapproved budgets in the past. I know, you know, it can't just be deficits, because many districts, you know, are running deficits, have run deficits, and, you know, don't necessarily have disapproved budgets. But I know there's, you know, there's sort of a lot going on. And so I just wanted to give Scoey an opportunity to address that question, and that would be it for me. Thank you.
Sure. So this is Nick Schweitzer again. So, yeah, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the structural deficit is a significant concern of ours. You know, we identified, you know, a number of concerns when we addressed the second interim that not only includes the structural deficit, but the fiscal history of the district and the potential for the district to, you know, fall back into a fiscal crisis where, you know, in a few years, you might again be, you know, on, you know, imminently at risk of insolvency. And, you know, we certainly want to prevent that. So that's the lens that we'll be using to look at the budget and evaluate the budget. You know, there may be other districts, as I've mentioned before, there may be other districts that are, you know, running temporary deficits. A lot of districts at this point in time are looking at a couple of years out at a potential fiscal cliff, but that they will need to deal with. But all of those districts have, for the most part, been not running structural deficits for the last several years, and have not had to, you know, make cuts recently as this district has to shore up its fiscal condition. So as I said, you know, very concerned about the structural deficit and the potential of the district re-entering a fiscal crisis in a few years. Yeah, you know, we don't feel like we can, you know, approve a budget that's going to have a long-run structural deficit and that's going to put a district, you know, back, you know, in potential fiscal insolvency in a few years. So, you know, we'll be evaluating this budget for that, and, you know, we may need to disapprove it as we've done in the past on that basis.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, just want to make sure, you know, if that is the case, that we have very good clarity around what those factors are, so that we can, you know, if there are other factors, such as, you know, negotiations being outstanding, et cetera, like what all those factors are that would potentially lead to a disapproval, if, you know, along with the letter that Scoey will send, letting us know, one way or the other. So thank you.
Yeah, let me just follow up on the subject of negotiations and, you know, potentially other costs or other cost increases. So certainly, negotiations or collective bargaining agreement in and of itself, you know, isn't a concern that the issue is where it's adding costs and increasing the structural deficit? You know, you certainly will need to bargain with your labor representatives here for a successor agreement, but, you know, you've got very limited room to provide, you know, salary, if any room at all, to really provide any compensation increases, given the structural deficit, unless you're able to find some, you know, significant offsetting savings in addition to what you need to identify to solve your structural deficit. And so that goes for any other new programs or cost increases that you might want to do, such as, you know, continuing some programs that you're talking about, you know, just now. You know, if you can't find a way to restructure them so that they're sustainable. So, you know, all of those are concerns that we'd encourage you to, you know, think about and be aware of.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Was that the last question you had, member Murawski? All right. Any other board commentary or questions? All right, with that, this is the first reading. We'll be bringing this back at a future board meeting. Thank you. Board for all questions. Item 9.2, public hearing, local control and accountability plan, three, for three years. Mr. Harris, hi.
Good evening. Good evening, Board Member Richard, Board Members Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris. I'm the Chief of Continuous Improvement and Accountability of Sac City Unified, and joined with some illustrious colleagues this evening to open the public hearing for our local control accountability plan. We've, I've been basically part three of a four-part novella, and so tonight actually is a milestone for us, because we actually will now be shifting from moving, just discussing the programming pieces, now we're actually bringing together the phenomena of both the programming and the budget. And so tonight is really a milestone in terms of now we've moved through the season of really gathering input, doing the needs assessment, creating strategies, and now we're in a position now to really present our first best thinking of what the overall local control accountability plan will look like. If we go to the next slide, please? So as we talk about what this plan is, it really is the artifact that documents the way in which we will actually apply the core value and fulfill the promise of the guiding principle. And it can be, you know, glib to walk by this, but really, as we do the work of the LCAP, we really are looking at ways, and this is in honor of not just our LCAP PAC, but actually many of the community groups you've reached out to. Many of them have called for us to take a bold stand in terms of looking to provide opportunities for everyone, every student, all students to grow, to learn, and really achieve their greatness. And so that's really the theme to a large degree of what we are proposing our next three-year LCAP. If we go to the next slide, please? So our aspiration is really anchoring all of our decision-making, and this ties back to the presentation we were just had with our fiscal department, to really think about our student needs being the foundation and the basis of all of our decision-making. And so that ultimately is reflected in the artifact of both our district-level planning through the LCAP, but then also at the next board meeting, you'll be adopting, hopefully, the school plans for student achievement, which really do have the same foundational base of looking at our students in their local context, developing action plans to resolve those places where we see gaps, and then having those drive our budgeting and spending priorities. If we go to the next slide, please? Now, this slide is new, and so some of the slides we'll go through pretty quickly because you've seen them before. But this is our first attempt, building on the last few weeks of board meetings, where we're trying to make meaning of all the planning that's happening. So on the far left, you see our LCAP goals. In the center, you see our CARES Act plan, which was presented to you last week. And then, of course, on the far right, you see our expanded learning opportunities grant. Now, I won't claim that this is how this artifact will remain, because this is our first time striking it. But what we're really trying to do is really three things here. One is show that we've been intentional as a system, trying to think about all these plans, and how do we make meaning between the plans? So this is our first attempt at making meaning between the plans. The other piece of the crosswalk, which I think is really important for you to see, is this notion of, in the last board meeting, there's a lot of conversation about how we're going to measure things. And so ultimately, in the LCAP, you're going to see measurable outcomes. And so what we're trying to do is figure out what's the way in which we can consolidate the notion of measurement, so that, you know, as we think about the ELO plan, how are we going to measure it? Think about the CARES Act, how are we going to measure it? Going to a large degree, and this is going to be evolutionary over time, we're trying to make sure that there's a through line of measurement. And so we get concentration of plans, right? Ultimately, you know, there may be many things that hopefully will move and improve climate. There may be many things that improve college and career readiness. They're going to cut across plans. And so what we're trying to do is make sure we're thoughtful about being able to measure the impact of plans, but also have appropriate redundancy, so we're not creating separate measures for every single plan. And so that's to the second theme of this. And then I'd just say the third theme really is our district ability to really say, how are we going to come back to you with updates? And so we're going to try to have kind of a through line in our updates, because obviously we don't want to have updates for each of these separately, when we think that there's an element of concentration to them. So, again, this slide is going to evolve over time, because honestly, you know, this is our first attempt to try and make meaning in crosswalk, but I think it's an encouraging slide, because we really are trying to be system, trying to improve our system-ness in these conversations. Go to the next slide, please? And so, again, this slide we'll go through relatively quickly, because you've seen the definition of the LCAP and the context of it. Obviously, we want this to be as much a community plan as possible and reflect in very specific ways our focus on student outcomes and concrete actions and expenditures to be implemented over the next three-year cycle. The next slide, please? As we talk about our students, we really are trying to ensure ways that we can see our students. And so this intersectionality graph is really meant to just give one way of looking at our students, both in terms of the student group, but also in terms of the ways in which they show up in other ways. And so, for example, you take the first line of African-American. As we work our way left to right, you see that African-American students make up about 13% of overall Sacramento City Unified student population. But as you look at kind of these subprograms, as you, again, work your way to the right, if we stop at foster youth, African-American students are just under 30%. As you look at homeless youth, African-American students are about 40%. And as you look at students with disabilities, African-American students are about 20%. And so this is our attempt to, again, show the intersectionality, which is kind of just a big word to say, we're just trying to show how our students show up in many ways. If we go to the next slide? And then equally important, we really have to focus on, how do we disaggregate the data so that we can make students visible in terms of the outcomes? And so for each of our LCAP measures, we're working to make sure we have a complete set of student metrics, in this context, student disaggregated metrics, to make sure that we can see all students' performance, so that we can really, as a district, be intentional. And one interesting trade-off, of course, is our LCAP document is always kind of big. This will kind of make it a little bigger, because honestly, obviously, to do this well, we have to make it a little bigger. And so just wanted to kind of put that in, because we know always folks find that to be a bit intimidating reading. We do wrestle with how to shorten it up, but we thought, here, we have to go and make a stand that, for all the metrics we can, we're going to disaggregate to the deepest level possible. If we go to the next slide, please? So as we think about our timeline, as I mentioned, this is part three of a four-part novella. So ultimately, tonight is our public hearing, where we hope to hear, you know, any additional feedback, but obviously, we've done a lot of work to try and ensure we've gotten a lot of feedback to get to this moment, and then, of course, June 24th, we'll look to adoption. I will say probably the most important part, actually, in many respects, is our beyond measures here, because we recognize that, obviously, there's a real opportunity for us to continue strong engagement in terms of explaining what the LCAP is, building on our partnership with our communications team, and then ultimately, of course, again, coming back to the board with ongoing substantial feedback and also outcome measurements on a quarterly basis to keep you on track with what's happening. If we go to the next slide, please? So just want to, again, use this slide just to acknowledge that, Theo, as we think about the document, you see me here as one person. This really reflects the work of many parts of our system. I mean, obviously, we have a lot to grow on, we have a lot to get better at, but as we think about our strategic planning process for the system, we're trying to do more and more internal work, so that we are more collaborative, we do break the infinite silos and make sure that our LCAP is informed with the best-in-class thinking from all of our most important departments. And these not in range, they're arranged in alpha, not in order of importance, so all of them are equally important, but they're arranged in alpha on the page. Go to the next slide, please? And we apply our own rigor around the conversations we try to have about how do we improve? And so these are some of our improvements that we're trying to do. Obviously, this is a not exhaustive list, but as you just saw, we're trying to work harder at the student disaggregation of data. We'll make a point about sharing state code of recommendations, because that was actually probably one of our leaps forward, if you will. If you remember, for the first time in our cycle of LCAPs, we actually got to the LCAP PAC's first set of recommendations, preliminary ones in December, and then, of course, we had, thanks to your leadership, the March workshop together. So those are some of the examples of how we've tried to bring this process forward, where traditionally, you didn't get the LCAP PAC's feedback until May. Go to the next slide, please? So the contents, you've seen this slide many times, so I won't repeat it, but obviously, over the next several slides, we'll give you a sense of the plan summary and our engagement and goals and actions and refinement, because we'll have the expenditure tables. And then, actually, at this point, now I'm going to transition the presentation to our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Mr. Adrian Vargas.
All right, thank you, Vincent. Next slide, please? So I'm going to talk about the budget overview for parents. This is the revenue section. So as I stated in my earlier presentation, we're projecting LCFF funds at 430.5 million. Of that, 79 million is generated from supplemental and concentration funds. We're estimating 76.2 million in federal funds, and other state funds, 6.3, 6.4 million, and local funds, 46.2 million. So it's a total of 559.3 million. Next slide, please? So on the expenditure side for the budget overview for parents, we're budgeting a total of 588.4 million. 352 million of those dollars are budgeted expenditures in the LCAP, and 89.7 million is budgeted for high-need students in the LCAP. So that leaves roughly 236 million not budgeted in the LCAP. And then the next table basically outlines the learning continuity plan, budgeted expenditures for the current year, and that was at 38.7. And right now, we are projecting estimated actuals at 35.2 million. Next slide, please? And then, again, just on our LCFF supplemental and concentration grant funding, we're, our projection, based off our enrollment and our duplicated people percentage of 72%, that we are projecting 79.2 million for '21-'22. These funds are intended for low-income students, English learners, homeless youth, and foster youth. And then, with the increased improved sector of the LCAP, we describe how services for high-need students are increased or improved, and for the '21-'22 year, that would be roughly about 23%. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Ramirez-Fong, and he's going to talk about the plan.
Thank you, Adrian, and good evening, board members, superintendent.
Thank you, Adrian, and good evening, board members, superintendent, and members of the community. Next slide, please? So this evening, as Adrian mentioned, I'll be providing a brief overview of some of the key contents that are in the 2122 to 2324 plan, and just acknowledging that, as Chief Harris noted, this is a large document, so there's no way we can provide every nuance inside of this presentation. And so we're really trying to give a roadmap, if you will, of what someone can find when they go deeper. With regards to plan summary, that's the, almost like an executive summary of the LCAP, and the reader would find some general context about the district, some reflections on our recent successes, and also our identified needs, and then also some highlights as to what's inside this year's plan. Here on this slide, we're sharing just some examples of focused topics you'd find in our identified needs section. And if you went into that section, you'd see some more detailed analysis of student performance results, you know, looking at dashboard and other local data, being able to further describe, you know, what are some of our needs, and particularly, what are some of the gaps in performance we see by student groups, and what do we forecast as far as getting to address? Next slide, please? We've shared the goal areas, you know, a number of times, and here, really, the purpose of this slide is to remind the community of the new guidance the state provided us on types of goals. And so here, you can see that we have five broad goals, two focus goals, and a maintenance and progress goal. And I think an important takeaway of this slide is just reflective of all the community conversation we've had. MTSS is a foundational piece for the whole LCAP. If you look at our broad goals, those are all rooted in MTSS. And so the presence of MTSS as a focus goal really speaks to the very intentional work going on with the three-year cohort training model, which is critically important to being able to build capacity and install MTSS, but it does not mean that MTSS isn't really undergirding all of those other pieces. And even after we accomplish that focus goal, MTSS will still be a backbone of this LCAP. Next slide, please? You know, when Adrian spoke of the expenditures, the budget overview for parents document is relatively similar to what it's looked like in the past. The expenditure tables in the LCAP itself are quite different in this new LCAP template. And we've shared a little bit about this in the past, but as a reminder, the state really has put a stronger emphasis on the purpose of actions, and a less of an emphasis on the resource or funding source of an action. And so you can see in this expenditure table, that is an example of how it appears inside of part of our LCAP. You see it broken down by personnel and non-personnel, but then you also see it broken down by resource clusters. And so when you see LCFF funds, for example, that's LCFF base and LCFF supplemental and concentration grant funds. So the LCAP itself no longer differentiates clusters of resources in some cases. So what we're committed to doing in our district, because we know that it's an important priority of our community, is to provide an appendix to the LCAP. And so we just want to reiterate that there will be an appendix to our LCAP that shows the specific breakdown by individual resource. Next slide, please? This slide was presented last time in our stakeholder input summary, and we're just reminding the board that there's a lot of different ways that we've, you know, brought input in, and I'm really excited to be able to pass off for a moment to two of our student advisory council members, who weren't able to be here. The student advisory council wasn't able to be here in our last meeting, and they're going to speak to some of those overarching themes that we've talked about in the past, really from that student perspective. So again, very honored to pass off to Isa and Sarah for the next slide.
Thank you, Stephen. And so we're just once again going to discuss these overarching themes that have been identified from the input from our various African-American Advisory Board, the A- American Indian Education Program, the Community Advisory Committee on Special Needs, the District English Learner Advisory Committee, and the LCAP PAC. Number one, as staff has identified a number of times, and as shareholders have shared, the effective implementation of an MTSS for students to equitably be met where they are with the needs that they have. Furthermore, identifying student needs and individualizing supports based on what those needs are, meeting students where they are, and sort of moving past the one-size-fits-all system that we've seen built for a certain type of student that hasn't accommodated for every type of student here. In addition, a focus on early literacy and developing a strong foundation in those essentials. You know, this year especially, we've heard from staff a number of months ago, seeing just the dismal, dismal numbers. We don't have enough assessment data, we need more, but from what we have seen, our younger elementary students are not getting what they need with regards to literacy, which is a fundamental skill for them as they go through the system, and for them to be behind at that early stage only sets them back for the entirety of their education and then further on. And with that, I'll pass it on to Sarah.
Good evening, everyone. This is Sarah Footage from the Student Advisory Council. So going off of what Isa was just talking about, one thing that we also discussed time and time again was having more support for mental health across the district, especially as we're coming out of this pandemic and students are returning to the classroom. There's a lot of recovery to be done in terms of mental health, so finding different ways to support students through that. In addition, and sort of on the same topic, improving classroom culture and climate, making classrooms a place where students feel like they're comfortable learning, so that even as good as the curriculum is, it can be as effective as possible for every single student. Continuing on with the equity narrative, ensuring that all students are having access to program, educational programs across all different schools and classrooms, no matter the background of the student. And this goes for even, you know, mental health support, ensuring that all students at different schools and different grade levels have the adequate support that they need. Again, equitable allocation of those resources, so that students of all different backgrounds are getting the help that they need in every aspect, whether educationally or socially. We also want to have some accountability in terms of implementation, to make sure that all of these programs that we want to have implemented, and a lot of the support systems that we want included, are actually getting to the students who need that support. And finally, disrupting the status quo in a year that's been described time and time again as unprecedented, we have found different ways to move around the status quo, and we can continue to do that when we're trying to find different ways to support students across the district. So thank you, and I'll pass it back.
Thank you, Isa and Sarah, particularly, you know, during this very busy time of year for students. I can't appreciate you enough for being here and continuing to, you know, represent student voice in these important conversations. The next series of slides, you know, for the board, but also for the community, provides a very high-level capture of what's in each goal, and we'll apologize in advance for some of the font size, but we felt it was really important to just provide a snapshot for someone reading this presentation that perhaps might not be digging into the document, to see what's in there. And so I'm not going to read the slides word for word, but what we have done is bolded some of the items that are more recent additions to the LCAP, whether they be action areas or metrics, so that someone can see what some of the newer thinking is, and some of the recent additions based on stakeholder input and also staff planning are. And we've also included on the slides a little inset box that shows how many dollars are allocated in that goal area, and what percentage of the total LCAP allocation that is. And I would just note there that, you know, between the public hearing and the final LCAP coming in two weeks, there are going to be some minor adjustments, as some staff finalize some of their smaller budgets, but we would expect that, in general, the amounts to be relatively in the same ballpark. So here for Goal 1, College and Career Readiness, just would note a recent addition is an action focused on transition planning for students with disabilities, and that's linked to one of the new actions that you'll see on the next slide, which is the post-secondary outcomes at the bottom there, which is really looking at being able to track how students with disabilities are following after their time with SUSD and participating in higher education or competitive employment. And you can see here, we've also added A through G and CTE combined completion rates, FAFSA completion, certificate of completion, that's a typo, apologies, it should say certificate of completion, our state seal of illiteracy, state seal of civic engagement, ID exam performance, and of course, the college and career indicator from the dashboard will be included in the next LCAP. Next slide, please? So for Goal 2, which is that Tier 1 foundational educational experiences, really excited to have the English learner goal action, which in the past has been a single action, expanded to encompass a range of actions. Here, inside of Goal 2, you'll see language acquisition programs, professional learning specific to English learners, and also pathways to multiliteracy. And then also, another addition has been multisensory reading intervention, both curriculum and training, and that's a partnership between our special education department and some of our curriculum and instruction team. Next slide, please? A number of actions have been added to Goal 2, as we've built out, you know, in response to stakeholder input and also district, you know, progress in certain areas. And you see our state science assessment, some LTAL long-term English learner tracking, our gate demographics, our district comment assessments, both participation and performance for math in the LA. And we've added a third-grade reading specific metric, also looking in the future to build a tool to help us assess the impact of collaboration time on our unduplicated students, and then also, most recently, a metric to align with our special education department's tracking of how much time is spent in these restrictive environments for our students with disabilities. Next slide, please? And our Goal 3, which is that Tier 2 and Tier 3 goal, where we're providing those targeted supports, you can see that specific goals around our English learner master plan development. And we do have a previous English learner master plan, but our team there in multilingual literacy has already initiated the review and early revisions, and that is, we're excited to have that come to the board next year for adoption, and also interventions and supports for English learners. You heard last presentation, last board meeting, rather, regarding our summer programming as part of our expanded learning opportunities grant, and also, we've recently added an action specific to data practices for students with disabilities that aligns with our work through the systemic instructional review process with the CCE. Next slide, please? And within Goal 3, you'll see the addition of a new metric that tracks the provision of responsive services to students in our Student Support Services and Health Department, and that's using our BIIS or data system that helps us monitor how students are doing and be able to be responsive in a timely manner. Next slide, please? For culture and climate, you know, we're continuing to maintain social-emotional learning, PBIS and bullying prevention, of course, but also have added the anti-bias, anti-racism professional learning that has kicked off this year, and is, you know, something that is going to be continuing over the course of this LCAP. And then you see in the following slide that we've added a metric specific to monitoring the completion status of that training, so that we can continue to report on the progress of training different groups of staff as we look to ultimately train the whole district. Next slide, please? Here, inside of our engagement and empowerment goal, you'll see that we've identified a few actions that are, have existed in the district, but we really want to raise up, and that's including our own student advisory council. We have had a minimums leadership academy, but we're also going to be expanding that, as you saw from last meeting's presentation, and then also the recent addition of family outreach tools through those everyday labs, communications that we utilize from in attendance. Next slide, please? And a number of actions, metrics, rather, to be built in, you know, including additions to our ELAC and our parent-teacher home visit areas, also looking at monitoring the actual impact of our parent leadership pathway workshops, and then building some new tools to actually look at the impact we're having with our district committees and the overall parent care 给 experience that we measured this year with the LCAP survey and are excited to continue measuring. Next slide, please? I'll just pause here to say that Goal 6 and Goal 7 are two focus goals. They are entirely new goals, and so rather than bolding all of those bullet points, we left them un-bolding for ease of reading. But in general, we'll just kind of reshare that Goal 6 MTSS implementation is focused on the capacity building and the installation of an MTSS system. And so it, again, that will undergird ultimately all the other goals. And so when we talk about academic outcomes and other outcomes, those are really the downstream effects of this goal. If schools have a functional MTSS system, then we will expect to see our other outcomes improve. So we can move on to the next slide, please, and the next slide after that. And again, the district graduate profile will be something that, right now, is a focus goal, but it is a through line through a lot of the other goals. We would expect that graduate profile to be looking at all the facets of a student, all of the capacities that a student, it will be developing over their career inside of SUSD. And so really, it is another through-line goal that has a very focused, immediate timeline to actually bring that graduate profile to bear, but then ultimately will have system-wide impacts. Next slide, and the next slide after that, please? And last but not least, you know, this term basic conditions and services is used by the state as one of our priorities, and we talk about our school accountability report card, but we would just emphasize here that the things you see inside of this goal are really crucial to the entire system. Maintaining safe and clean facilities is a necessary starting point for having a healthy learning environment. Having our core staffing in place is necessary to have our students be able to learn in the classroom with our highly qualified teachers, providing those teachers support to get their credential cleared, and then also providing those core adopted materials. So you'll see here, as reflected with the total amount and percentage of the LCAP, this is a really critical goal, even though we would call it the maintenance of progress goal, we're maintaining very important elements of our district. Next slide? And you can see here the standard metrics we've had in place for these areas over the years. And so with that, I will pass it back to Chief Harris for the final slides.
And so this slide is meant to just give perspective of, as we've, you know, implemented this round of LCAP development, we're also looking at lessons learned. And so this gives you a real sense of some of those lessons learned, which you'll see applied during the course of the school year. One is going to continue to be, you know, I showed you kind of our first thinking around integration slide, and we're going to continue to wrestle with, how do we make our plans and our planning appear to be integrated? Hopefully, long-term seamless, but definitely in the short term, integrated, in which you'll see reemerging themes that will be captured in our LCAPs over time, because we recognize that plans aren't going to be effective if they're all siloed to some degree. And so we're working on this notion of building coherence, our SER plan, our expanded learning opportunity plan, our CARES Act. We're going to continue wrestling with, how do we bring those together, both in terms of just the alignment of the plans and then the alignment of measurable outcomes? Because again, if we get concentration of effort, we know that gives us a higher probability of changing outcomes for students. Ultimately, we know as a system, you know, if we're going to ever have our system-ness, we're going to have to make sure the LCAP is fully integrated as we think about our site plans. And of course, there's a complexity with that, because our school site councils have the local context of those school sites. And so in no way are we looking to supplant the insights that folks have in their local context, but we also know there's themes across the district. You hear them as board members, and we recognize them as staff. And so we're going to make sure that we're working aggressively to make sure the thematic things of our system do show up within our site plans as appropriate, again, giving sites the flexibility to customize their local context. We've got a partnership with our communications team that we've been excited about. You've seen the branding piece of it, but that's really the front end. We're going to continue to work in the notion of building a better communication of the plan. You know, the LCAP's a big document, it will be a big document this year. We also recognize there's ways that we can break it into its manageable chunks for our community, so that they understand, and then they can hold us accountable. And so we're going to continue to work on that and collaborate. And related to that is our stakeholder engagement. We know there's always opportunities there. Even if you spoke to, let's figure out how to engage more effectively with our employees, whether it be through the employees directly or through their bargaining units, we recognize that. Actually, we have the same chart to our community groups, in which we've done the listening sessions, but you can never do enough in terms of listening to our community, listening to our families. And so we're continuing to think about other ways to build capacity there. And then, actually, the last bullet really does speak to, we didn't put the slide in, because of course, we've had it in several times, but it speaks to the FICMAT finding in terms of that disconnect between budget and LCAP. And ultimately, we've actually spent this year continuing to build capacity, in which we actually have a monthly meeting with our budget office to calibrate. You know, it's not just showmanship that we had Assistant Superintendent Vargas with us tonight, that's actually real in terms of how we're trying to build concrete connections. Now, that said, there's still room to grow, there's still opportunity for us to even get more refined, because if we get more refined, we can get to more of the return on investment for our student programming, and that's what we're really striving to do. And so that's the long goal, is, one, get the communication solid, get the integration solid, and then get to a point where we can talk more effectively around, you know, for this amount of money, this was the student outcome that was produced. And that's our long-term vision in terms of partnership. With that, in the presentation, enter back to the board for the public hearing.
Thank you so much. I believe we have four live public comments for this item.
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is from Mo Kashmiri. We also have requesting to speak Renee Webster-Hawkins.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm donating my time to Angie or Sarah.
Perfect, thank you, Renee. Next comment?
Our next speaker is Angie Sutherland.
Thank you. Angie, would you be taking Renee's time as well? Do we not have it, Ms. Sutherland?
She is listed, but she's not coming online, it looks like. We can go to Sarah Williams Kingsley.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. This is Sarah Williams Kingsley, and I'm speaking for myself, and I'm using Renee Webster-Hawkins' time as well.
Thank you.
I wanted to applaud the LCAP PAC and the Student Advisory Committee and the District English Language Learners Committee and the Native and Indigenous Students Committee. It was a huge amount of work to put into this presentation, and the things I saw come out of it are really encouraging to me as a parent who's been involved in this work for a number of years. And I want to specifically call out that having specific items and money attached for expanding transition services and the multi-tiered system of support is so huge. I served on that committee for a while, and seeing it rolled out, even at the delay, is such a huge thing of encouragement that our students are going to be getting more of what they need when they do return to classrooms in this fall. And the multisensory literacy programs and the data practices for students with disabilities, and seeing the actual number of hours or minutes time spent in least restrictive environment data, all of that is based on input from parents and community members. And I want to really call out our community for stepping up and providing that guidance and that input and that push for our district to better serve our students. We've done the work, and now we need the board to listen to this community input and really implement this plan that has been put together with so many parents and community members and some really thoughtful people who care deeply about our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marty, do we have any of the other? Angie Sutherland back online? Or Mo Cashmary?
It looks like Mo Cashmary is now online.
Okay.
Hey, everybody. Mo Cashmary, thanks again for having me. I just wanted to say, you know, we know what our kids need. Our kids need lower class sizes. We need to end combo classes. We want to have more social workers and psychologists. I definitely see a lot of great stuff in this plan, but what I don't see is I don't see like, you know, they're really implementing what the stakeholder, what our staff are asking for, right? I think we should be listening to the folks that actually know the names of our students and listening to what they want and putting that in there as well. So again, I don't see lower class sizes in there. I don't want, you know, and I think we need to work on, long-term, if there's not enough revenue, then our job, your job as a board and our job as a community is to put together a proactive plan to get the revenue that we need to build the education that all our kids deserve. Instead of talking about austerity and drastic cuts, we need to invest in our kids, invest in our future. We know that pays off, and it's up to us to do that. And I don't want to hear anymore talk about austerity cuts. I want to hear leadership about getting this the money that we need to make things happen. Everyone thought I was crazy when I said earlier that we should be getting more revenue to overcome our issues. And now, look, we've done it. Now we just need to keep building on that and make those revenue increases permanent and go even further. So again, I want to encourage us to think outside the box instead of just the whole black and white, let's just cut, let's just cut. Austerity will never make this district great. We know that with 13,000 kids homeless out of our thing, you know, there are big needs that need to be addressed, and we need to be doing the big thinking. And I don't see that happening here, to be honest. But I do appreciate that there's some movement on small issues, but we're still whiffing the ball on the biggest issue, which is whether we're giving our kids the support that they need and deserve. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Thank you.
Good evening again. I want to thank Mr. Fong and Mr. Harris for including the breakdown of populations within the defined subgroups. I know there was a specific ask from one of the listening sessions I attended, and I think it paints a powerful picture to not just look at what the state tells us is going to be defined, but defining that, you know, for relevance within our own district. So to see those numbers, I hope, gives you guys the ability to make more informed decisions, not at the higher level, but looking at who those students actually are and where they actually come from. I saw notated on the LCAP presentation an IB supplement. And if I were to cross-reference that back to the previous presentation on the budget where we have programs that basically are, you know, being supplemented, I know that in addition to the two there on slide 18 from the previous presentation, there's also Luther Burbank, which isn't on there. And I don't know if that's because it doesn't require supplementation or if it's just omitted. But that speaks to a greater need for we, as a district, to look at where are we supplementing programs? Who do they serve? And are they students that are generating the dollars that tell us we need to actually supplement their education, right? So if they're from those subgroups like the one slide showed, then yes, if they're attending those programs, then we should be supplementing them. But if we continue to act without complete data, then we're really doing a disservice to our children. I did see George Washington Carver on there, which I believe is a great program. But I remember earlier when they were fighting for their charter renewal, a lot of students came and said that they don't even live within our district footprint. So again, it goes back to you guys to set your priorities, to who are we serving? What are your priorities? And then that allows us to see continual, consistent decisions made within a framework that we all know before the decisions are made, and then those questions won't be coming back as to why did, you know, and then going again to another comment. You know, I never questioned, I did question Ms. Ramos's increase, but it's because it came without data. I know that there were additional hires within operations that may have taken some of those responsibilities that we assume she's assuming off of her plate. I know that we have SCHOY support to do some of the CBO jobs. So if we're looking at it holistically and, you know, across the board, some of the things that maybe would normally be done by CBO are actually taken care of by an outside source that we're paying for as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, that was the last comment, Ms. Marty.
Yes, that was the last comment.
Okay, I'll open it up for board discussion. Member Villa?
I just wanted to touch on a few things. First of all, I think this is a fabulous roadmap that is not black and white. This is, to me, very robust. It's truly putting kids first. So you guys did an amazing job. I'm glad that all of the committees were a part of this. You know, we obviously need input from our educators and different folks, but this is really allowing our community to take charge and, again, the roadmap for the kids. So amazing. I love, on page 17, I wanted to note that creating that transparency, a breakdown of funds, I think is crucial. Everybody asks those kind of figures and showing actually those, the breakdown of, again, the funds is really important and actually creating this, even though it's just a graph, that's going to go a long way for folks to see where those are going. I love the focus on the mental health. That's something that I think next year is our number one priority, inclusive programs and making sure that the funds are allocated. And I've seen that so many times throughout this program, and that, again, is going to be a huge thing personally for me that we need to make sure we support students in the fall and beyond. I'm just going to say a few other things I love, the metrics breakdown. I think that's really crucial. We need to see those things. And again, I just think this is an amazing roadmap. The goals are so thorough. You guys really did the work, and this is the kind of report that I like to see because, again, it shows the numbers, it shows the breakdown, and it's so thorough. Every goal has the metrics. You're going to be able to provide that data to us ongoing, where it's not going to be confusing. And we always say, let's, we need to see more data. You've given us the data. So thank you to your team. I think it's an amazing roadmap.
Number Murawski?
Thank you. I echo Member Villa's comments. I'm really, really impressed with the plan overall, and I really appreciate the stakeholder engagement. And I feel like, I do feel like, you know, there's obviously more to fill in, but this is a really, really good foundation. So again, just thank you. There's just a couple of things that I mentioned last time that I wanted to follow up on. One of them is just kind of how firm is our goal around early literacy? I saw that, you know, it was one of the key stakeholder items that was brought up, but in terms of how it's reflected in the plan, I didn't see as bold, I guess, and firm goals around early literacy. So can you speak to that for a moment?
Sure. I'll start and then defer to Mr. Ramirez-Fong. I mean, certainly, you know, part of this was to clarify with the LCAP PAC as well exactly where they're targeting. So we've been working with the academic team to try and land in the right place. So I would say that's one of the goals that I would say is still formative to some degree, and probably we'll see a little bit, some nuance to it or frankly, revision probably by the time we bring it to the final adoption. But I'll defer to Mr. Ramirez-Fong in terms of, I know he has a direct conversation with some of the departments.
Thank you. Actually, I'm number Murawski, and just for community, this has been the conversation with the academic team, even in the last, you know, few days. What we're doing right now is trying to actually build a new action around what I understand to be a six-year literacy plan. And I could certainly defer to one of our academic team members who's here, but that's really focusing on providing training in three successive cohorts to all our teachers, all our administrators, using, you know, a literacy program specifically called Letters. And what that would also then provide is out-year training for any new hires into the district and really looking at that as being a systemic shift for how we do reading instruction. So we do expect to see a new action in there. I think the question you're speaking to is, at some point, does that evolve into a goal itself versus an action in a metric? I would defer again to the academic team, but I think you're asking these exact questions we're wrestling with and how can we more fully represent the work that's going on in early literacy in the LCAP. And we would expect to see some additional actions in there between now and the final plan based on that work from the academic team. I don't know if any of them want to chime in.
Well, I guess I would say, you know, I don't want to, you know, there's a lot of people involved in this, and I'd be like another cook in the kitchen, but I want to see whether it is an action within a goal or a goal itself. I think it's just so critical, possibly worth its own goal being called out, but I just, you know, that's just an area that I would like to see more focus on. There was one issue around kind of the former operational excellence goal that kind of transitioned into kind of just the baseline of maintaining operations, which I really appreciate having a baseline because it's just, you know, this is kind of the foundational stuff. It's not, you know, I think that's a really positive thing. But again, it doesn't really address any organizational improvement efforts at all. So I don't know if, you know, if maybe the LCAP is just not the place that that lives because it didn't seem to be a priority of stakeholders and so forth. So, you know, it would be, it would be fine to me to see it explained or followed up on in a different format, maybe outside of the LCAP. So that's just something that I would, you know, I would throw to you, to superintendent to consider, you know, just so we can keep abreast as a board, you know, responsible for, you know, ensuring positive operations of the district, know what is going on, like how are we improving, you know, to make sure we have adequate staffing? And how are we, you know, how are we tracking these different departments to make sure they're effective? And what, you know, what kind of improvements are we making in IT to streamline or what, you know, just so we can have a better picture of that and can keep track and celebrate those successes as well? So I guess that's all to say, you know, it seems fine not to have it in the LCAP, but I think it needs to live somewhere. Yeah, the one thing I did have kind of a question about is the table in the back that shows all the expenditures. There's some, there's some actions that don't have an expenditure attached to them. So I'm just wondering about, is that just because it's not for the upcoming school year, but it will be done later? Or just pulling out a couple, the anti-bias, anti-racism, professional learning, revision of graduate profile, expansion of theater arts, they don't seem to have an expenditure attached.
I can respond to that briefly, Number Murawski. The first and the last example you gave would both be examples of projected expenditures we're still waiting on for individual department estimates. And in some cases, we have a rough target, but we need to be able to understand how much is personnel versus non-personnel. And in some cases, there, we're checking on grant allocation. So for the anti-bias, anti-racism professional development, as well as the theater arts programs, that would be the case. For the graduate profile actions, because of the way that's currently being conceived, those actions will be enacted by staff that are already detailed in other departments. We're trying to avoid redundancy. It doesn't track well in this table, but in the LCAP itself, you've made that notation. So if someone was looking for the same, answering the same question, we're trying to give at least some breadcrumbs to show why we have zeros in there.
Okay, I guess I would just ask, you know, it be, you know, indicated whether it's a TBD or if it's, you know, a budget-neutral sort of activity, just that that be made really clear. And also, you know, I guess the other observation I have about just the way it's set up is it has to, it's hard to see like what's continuing versus what's new. So if there's, if there's a way to, I mean, I know that they were bolden in the PowerPoint, but kind of in the, in the plan itself, it doesn't really distinguish. So it's kind of hard to know, you know, what are the new initiatives that we're, that we're talking about that are new to this budget? So just a way to kind of designate those in the plan or? And I guess lastly, the, we talked about, you know, you talked about initially like the, having an accountability plan, showing how it's integrated with the other plans and efforts we have. So what are your thoughts about, like, when can we expect as a board and community to come back to see something that is like, something that tracks all the metrics, that tracks all the activities, something more comprehensive that, you know, could be like regularly updated? I guess how long do you think staff needs to kind of put together something like that?
So there's a few complexities to your question, Number Murawski, so I'll answer it, and I'll ask you to give grace on the use of the term "all." I'll say as soon as the first quarter of school year, we will start something. So to the underneath of your question, what I think is most likely going to happen is that those things that are most easily for us to measure, that we already measure, chronic absenteeism, suspension, will come to you immediately on those. I think the underneath of yours is those things like teacher collaboration, where we're building new tools and artifacts. You know, 2BD in terms of finishing those, but probably some point during the school year, we'll have the "all" done. But I could commit, I was very comfortably saying, we can start a process of review starting the first quarter of school year and commit to a quarterly process of review because some of these metrics, obviously, we already have access to. I think the limiting factor will be the new ones because they require new staff work. And of course, with a new metric, there's a little bit of trial and error. And so with the new ones, we may come to you and say it's this, and then we're going to say it's that as we learn a little bit more, much like the crosswalk I debuted with you this evening. That crosswalk will probably evolve over time as we get a greater understanding of how it's better to delineate exactly the programming that we're doing and to how to group things appropriately so we can say this metric is actually getting the concentration of these five things. This metric is getting the concentration of these things. So I would say to your question on "all," that's probably going to emerge in the second half of the school year. But the question of can we build infrastructure to provide quarterly updates, I think that's almost, that is immediate. That is the first quarter of school year. Once we start the school system year, start accumulating the kind of the traditional data points, we'll start with those and add in the new ones as appropriate. So quarterly, I would say is the answer to your question. Of the "all" pieces has a little bit more ambiguity in that I think that'll be the back half of the school year.
Okay, that sounds great. So we can, we can sort of kind of pencil in something like an LCAP update, LCAP metric update report quarterly, something like that. Okay, that sounds wonderful.
I firmly commit to that.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work.
And Member Murawski, if I can just tie in a question that you asked at the last board meeting, I think, with slide number four that our staff presented today, and Mr. Harris said, you know, this debuting. We have, of course, done a lot of work, and I just want to thank the county.
We, of course, done a lot of work and I just want to thank the countless stakeholders that have offered and, and been engaged in just countless hours of dedicated time to support the development of the LCAP plan. But as I said at the last board meeting, and you can see it on slide four, there is a real need for us to start figuring out how to stitch together all of these, all of these programs and services and reports, some that are not even on here, like the Council of Great City Schools from 2017. We, as I mentioned, we are working with Carnegie Institute to help us with that effort as well. And I, I mentioned it because as you're talking about accountability and metrics and KPIs, I suspect that the result of some of this stitching is going to require us to refine some of those metrics so that we don't have metrics for the SIR report and metrics for the LCAP and metrics for the Council of Great City Schools and metrics for every single thing that we're trying to stitch together, but instead figure out how to create greater alignment so that we have one set of metrics that are the result of a successful stitching of all of these things. And so it's, it's a journey that we're on and, and that's what I would prefer to, to make a commitment on. Because we will start with those that are clear in the LCAP because we're obligated and we should, we should, we should make a commitment to our community to monitor those. But eventually in, in longer term, we're going to have to bring back and decide on one set of metrics that are the result again of a successful stitching of all of these efforts.
Thank you.
Member Shayk?
Super duper, we're all getting pretty tired. I just wanted to ask for our community, sort of very simply, Mr. Harris or Mr. Ramirez Fong, when we take the vote later this month to adopt the LCAP, what does that, you know, what does that materially mean? Does it mean that these are goals that are set out for the board to take further action on to live up to? Does it mean that some of the actionable items that are listed here, staff go straight to work putting into place? Could we just explain the significance of adopting the LCAP?
Sure. And certainly to your, to your question, Boomer Shayk, the reality of it is, yes, you're committing, the board is committing the plan. Now, that said, it's an evolving plan, so there's elements of this is the game plan we're starting with. And so this is how we will communicate to our stakeholders, these are our priorities. So this is, this is the plan. Now wrapped in that, of course, is the notion that it's a three-year plan. So we have elements of it that we may come back to and revise over time. And again, part of it will continue the stitching as the superintendent spoke to, and also work with the fiscal team to make sure that we're funding things appropriately. But I would say the adoption makes a statement beyond symbolism. It does declare this is staff work that will be coming back to you and committing to revise and update. And then, of course, revise as, as we get feedback from community and board members. Does that get sufficiently to?
Yeah, thank you.
Member Garcia? Yes, thank you. Just wanted to thank you for all the work that goes into the development in LCAP and the entire ecosystem that it requires in terms of stakeholder input, all those meetings, et cetera. So I'm just very thankful to all our volunteers and staff. I did have some questions along the lines of board member Murawski because as I was looking at the, reading the draft LCAP, I'm having a hard time understanding what's new. So the presentation helps, but also what is it that worked and we're going to continue to fund? But just as importantly, what is, what are we no longer funding? What strategies did we try that didn't work out? And we are now sort of letting go of those. I think that's really important. So I don't know if the, and the updates that, that, that can be included. And I also wanted to, as I looked in terms of many of the actions, a lot on professional learning and others as well, but those are the ones that come to mind now. You know, trying to figure out, breaking out, what is contention upon negotiations? Because if it's in this plan, but there's no agreement or whatever the agreement is, then what is, what happens and to what degree and what doesn't happen? So I think it's important to also understand that and maybe through the updates, we can, we can get that type of information. I wanted to thank you for, I think, elevating the English learners, you know, I think issues that have, D-LAC has brought up in the past, you know, with really breaking out the long-term English learners, the LITTLES, and also making sure that we focus on, you know, ensuring that the ELAX are being formed at the school site level. I know there's always a challenge, but, but just wanted to make sure that I, I recognized that work. So, and I'll, and I'll leave my comments as that because I know it's, it's late, but thank you.
And I'll just add to your question, Boomer Garcia, I mean, one way we will approach your question too, there's, there's no longer funding because we, we know it didn't work. There's also no longer funding because we couldn't measure it. So, so we'll, we'll try to get clarity on, bring clarity with, with those questions, yes.
All right, seeing any other questions? This is the first reading, and so we'll be bringing it back. Thank you to everyone involved in this blueprint. It'll be very, very nice to have this approved by our board. Thank you so much. All right, item 9.3, public hearing, a second reading of revised board policy 5146, married, pregnant, parenting students, Mr. Bosio and Ms. Flores.
Okay, well, good evening, President Pritchett, Board of Education, Superintendent Aguilar. We are here to bring you the second reading of the revisions to board policy 5146, married, pregnant, parenting students. And hopefully for the, the board's adoption of these revisions to the policy. I'm Mr. Bosio, in-house counsel. Can we go ahead and go to the next slide, please? To recap what was presented to you at the last board meeting, our, our recent FPM review from CDE noted that we did need to make some additions to bring this policy up to current requirements from ED Code. The, the policy itself does a lot of important things. Initially, following ED Code 221.51 prohibits discrimination of students who are married, pregnant, or parenting students. Our policy already contained strong language in that regard, but has updated language to make sure that that is a clear right and protection for, for these students. The other really important piece that we needed to update is to comply with section 46015. And that provides pregnant and parenting students their, their right, their entitlement to eight weeks of parental leave. As you can see, it's been some time. Actually, the policy was adopted in 2015. So some of these updates to ED Code are fairly recent. And again, the need to, causing the need for the update. Next slide, please. Oops, let's go back one. Again, the policy is intended to recognize those important rights related to marriage, pregnancy, parenting. And the district's responsibility is to provide those students with the opportunity to succeed academically while protecting their health and their children's health. These revisions now bring the policy in line with ED Code. And again, I would emphasize the importance of adding the very substantive portion on parental leave, guaranteeing that right for our students. And also, there's, there's nice language in the policy that helps to address and ensure those students upon their return from such leave that they're, you know, reintegrated into the program, that they're allowed the opportunity to catch up on anything that they've missed. And it also provides for the opportunity for a fifth-year high school if that is, if that is necessary. Also, strong protections and language regarding the accommodations that the students may need, including the right to express breast milk during the school day and how that should be arranged for. Those are the, the major additions. The only changes from the last board meeting presentation, very minor. A couple of, a couple of comments were made to keep in some of the language that, that addresses the prohibition on discrimination. So we did that and made sure that that stayed in, in addition to the new language that, that we did adopt this policy from the CSBA model policy. So quite, quite a strong anti-discrimination language contained within the policy. So with that, I would turn it over to the board and any public comment. Take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bosio. All right, we have no public comment on this item. I'll open it up for any board discussion. All right, seeing no board discussion, I'll open it up for, oh, I apologize, member Wu. Oh, you're moving it. Okay, sorry. I have a motion on the table. Can I get a second? All right, I have a motion and a second, student preferential vote.
Aye.
Thank you. And superintendent Roehl Hall.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, 10.0 communications, 10.1 employee organization reports. SCTA per article 18.12 has 15 minutes.
David Fisher will be reporting on behalf of SCTA.
Good evening. Don't worry, it will not be taking 15 minutes. Before I go into my prepared remarks, I just wanted to just let you know that, you know, as we were talking on the budget and hearing about the deficits and some comments, you know, I went back and looked at the district's actuals. So, you know, you can look at them. I don't want people to have to believe us, but look at the unuttered actuals, go to capital letter E, look where it says net increase or decrease in fund balance in the unrestricted side. And if you guys, if anyone sees numbers that are different than what we're seeing, we'd, you know, be grateful to point it out to us. But just based on, you know, we don't deny that there's a structural deficit in your projections. It's just you, unless there's documents that we're not looking at, which I'd be very grateful to be pointed out, then your actuals show that you don't run deficits. Again, I challenge anyone or anyone listening or any board member to take a look and we can see if we're looking at the same numbers. Speaking of numbers, 96.1% and 97.4%, the numbers, pretty astounding. And the virtual unanimity is unprecedented. As Nikki stated in her public comments earlier, the drive to conduct the vote came from the growing frustration that the educators have with Mr. Aguilar since he began in 2017. Comprehensive overview of the track record can be found on our website at sacteachers.org. As a school board, you can no longer ignore what many educators have expressed and felt numerous times over the past few years. District needs to move in a different direction. With K-12 funding at the highest levels in California history and with $313 million in additional revenue coming from the state and federal government and COVID relief dollars, there's absolutely no excuse for the district not to work with educators in both SCTA and SEIU to revitalize our district. That is why on June 8th, we presented the district with our framework for returning back to school better than our district has ever been, better in a way that our students deserve and our students need. Again, we wish to reiterate what's in our framework. We want to present publicly what we proposed. Number one, improve student services, including lowering class sizes, increasing physical and mental supports for students, school psychologists, school nurses, counselors, school social workers, and through the development of implementation of expansion of community schools. Providing reading intervention specialists at every elementary school, real intervention. Developing restorative practices culture at every single school site. Increasing funding and training for the Parent Teacher Home Project. Educating time and supplies for relational building activities within the school day. Increasing access to the career and technical educational programs that match the interest of our student body. Expanding child development opportunities. Providing expanding arts, music, sports, enrichment activities for students. And providing a virtual non-concurrent instructional option for all interested students. In addition, staff recruitment and retention and support. Working to recruit and retain a diverse and highly trained educators who reflect the diversity of the district, including providing competitive wages and benefits. Educator-developed and focused professional development for all certified staff in restorative practices. Trauma-informed teaching strategies, cultural responsive and anti-racist teaching practices, including concrete strategies and tools for addressing racism, privilege and bias in the classroom. Inclusive practices and universal design for learning and the resources necessary to implement. The recruitment and retention of classified staff to maintain the health and safety of school facilities and provide the essential support services that enhance student instruction. District has never been in a, in a better position to implement these much-needed improvements ever in our history. The ability to move forward, to make the changes our students so richly deserve requires you, the elected officials of the Sacramento City Unified School District, to fill the vacuum and to provide the leadership that is required to take full advantage of these opportunities. Educators have spoken. Our district needs new direction. Thank you.
SEIU?
There's no report.
And no report, TCS, Teamsters, UPE?
No, that's correct.
Thank you. Okay, 10.2, district advisory committees, the CAC?
Yes, Taylor Kayata is reporting.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on your community advisory committee. As you know, we are a committee that exists pursuant to the ED Code that is comprised of parents, teachers, and community members who advise you on issues affecting students with disabilities. We also act as a forum for parents of students with disabilities to learn how to navigate special education services. I've been the CAC secretary for the past year. On Tuesday of this week, we held our last general meeting of the school year. I wanted to tell you about some of our accomplishments. We had a record turnout at many of our meetings held on Zoom during the pandemic. And all of our meetings have had translation, all of our general meetings have had translation in multiple languages. We were actively engaged with the school board via our liaison, member Murawski, and by providing feedback from our members in these meetings throughout the year. Notably, we worked closely with member Murawski in an ad hoc budget committee to inspire district staff to create more transparent special education budget displays for the board. We welcomed and formed great relationships with the new special education director, Dr. Sadie Hettigard, and new Selva director, Giovanni Lenores. We invited SCTA to provide updates to our members, which allowed us to hear their perspective on specification issues and engage in direct dialogue. We hosted a number of informative presentations for parents on issues including MTSS and UDL. We will soon be planning for the 2021-22 school year and look forward to continuing our good work. However, our work for this year is not done. First and foremost, the district has not yet completed the special education backlog issue. The assessments need to continue, including during the extended school year. The district should plan now to be ready to resume assessments in the fall and take seriously the need to engage in child find activities in the fall as more children return to the classroom. We were disappointed that the district seemed to have missed the opportunity to work on individualized IEP goals during the extended school year. Students with disabilities have stagnated during this pandemic and some need intensive efforts to get back on track. This, as usual, will not be enough. We encourage you to take seriously the need to work out the details on learning options for students when they return to virtual or classroom instruction in September. Our students need to know what opportunities are available to them and how their IEPs will be implemented. Finally, we would like to recognize Superintendent Aguilar for attending some of our meetings this last year and offering to work closer with the CAC going forward. We hope to continue this relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. The district English learner advisory committee?
No, no report.
Local control accountability plan parent advisory committee?
Yes, Renee Webster-Hawkins is reporting.
Hello, President Pritchett, the trustees and superintendent. I'm honored to provide the LCAP parent advisory committee update tonight. With your indulgence, I would like to take just a bit of time to offer a postscript from the PAC after your first hearing of the draft LCAP plan just a bit ago. First, I want to acknowledge the significant time, attention, and deliberation that this board has paid to this three-year update this year. From the pandemic-inspired learning continuity and accountability plan last fall to the workshop and multiple presentations from the PAC to you, from the Student Advisory Council, the D-LAC, and the American Indian Education Program Parent Committee, as well as many of you dropping into our meetings to listen, the increased investment and concern has been noticed and appreciated. been noticed and appreciated. To be clear, it hasn't been easy this year. The LCAP work is never easy because we are called to think deeply, thoughtfully, and collectively about the painful reality that faces our most disenfranchised students and families every day. And we're asked to provide recommendations to dedicate our district's limited resources to be invested in our most disadvantaged students by adults who are often at loggerheads. But the 16 of us who come together, literally dozens of times over the past two years to do this work, and I know that my colleague, Mr. Rich Vasquez, has the exact number of meetings, we do it because we all believe, we have to believe, that at the end of the day, every one of us share a common purpose, and that is to wake up each day and make every student's education in our district better tomorrow than it was yesterday. And to do the extra work to uplift the hope and educational experience of our BIPOC students, our unhoused students, our English language learners, our foster youth, and our students with disabilities. So earlier in the hearing on the draft LCAP, you received a summary of the expansive set of recommendations as a clarion call to action to build an equitable system that eliminates systemic bias and truly sees and serves all students. The call to action urges the board to adopt a plan that disrupts the status quo, dismantles nostalgic policies and practices that aren't proven to accelerate students' learning, and eradicates the policies, agreements, and practices that deprive students of their fundamental right to learn. The call to action urges your leadership to build up and invest in system-wide professional development, in improved academic and cultural responsiveness for every adult, not just teachers, but every adult that serve our children, and expects that these adults apply this advanced learning with fidelity in a robust and inclusive educational environment driven by a multi-tiered system of supports. And that that system is marked by an individualized learning plan that takes every student from TK through graduation. The document is lengthy, but to cut through all the words and be laser-focused and to address some of your comments on the draft plan earlier, to be clear, the LCAP PAC has called for all students remaining on grade level by third grade. We've called for a 100% graduation rate, and we've called for all students to be included in safe, non-racist, and well-supported schools in their neighborhoods with robust individual learning plans that prepares them for college, career, and life. If those goals aren't in this plan, it's not because the PAC didn't want them. The team of PAC members agreed to serve an extra year of service to address the needs of our students during this unprecedented pandemic. And each member, I can tell you, did it with heart and unselfish commitment to the students in our district. And I would just like to applaud the service, professionalism, and support from Mr. Stephen Fong Ramirez and Mr. Vincent Harris, even when the PAC members got fussy and railed and lamented about inertia or entrenched politics that make us feel that our efforts might be futile. The result is a very good plan, and as Stephen and Vincent have said, it is intended to be a living document and will always welcome improvements. But however, now that the blueprint has been drafted, it is up to all seven of you to ensure that every decision you make, every penny you approve, and every policy you adopt or update are in full-throated support of this LCAP plan. I would wager that the collective leadership and advocacy of these 16 parents that have been serving this district on behalf of our students is unparalleled in California. So please do not squander it. As a board, I hope you feel you're indebted and, and have deep gratitude for each member on the PAC. Bittersweet, this will be my last, my last update to you as an LCAP PAC member as my term is concluding. And with that, I will submit our stakeholder comments.
Thank you, Ms. Webster Hawkins, and thank you for your service. Student Advisory Council?
I'll, I'll address that in my report, so we can defer that.
Okay. African American Advisory Board?
There is no report, but Terrence Fladney has-
We have two live comments, correct, on Community Advisory Committee and African American Advisory Board?
Yes, it's Terrence Fladney for both.
Okay.
Excuse me, that's incorrect. We do have a report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Julius Austin is reporting on behalf of the African American Advisory Board.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, superintendent, board members, uh, and community members, along with, uh, district staff. Uh, my name is Julius Austin. I serve as the chair of the African American Advisory Board. Uh, the purpose of our board is to advise the board, uh, superintendent, and relevant district department designees regarding the accountability of services, programs, policies, and resources that directly impact, uh, the district, uh, school culture and climate of our classroom, and the academic, socially, so, excuse me, social, emotional, and personal outcomes for Black and African American students. Uh, also, we are here to review, uh, monitor, monitor and evaluate the, uh, continuous improvement of the district's implementation of the board-adopted Black, African American task force recommendations that were adopted on May 16th of 2019. And we also, uh, consider other possible strategic areas as, as appropriate. Uh, the board is comprised of 27 members who are community leaders who represent organizations such as, uh, the Black Parallel School Board, NAACP, uh, Greater Sacramento Urban League. There are advocates, there are educators, and so much more. But most importantly, this board is comprised of over two-thirds, um, of the members are parents, uh, who currently have students in the district. And so, uh, I think it's really important that that is stated. Now, let me give you a little background on the African American Advisory Board. Um, initially, uh, there was the African American Achievement Task Force, um, that was created by, uh, superintendent. And that, uh, task force was charged with creating, uh, recommendations, uh, and they carried out that task. They also created a three-year implementation plan. One of those recommendations, uh, was to create an advisory board. And, uh, there was a transition team that was comprised of some of the members of the task force and additional community members. Uh, they began to, uh, create that advisory board. Uh, as they began to create, um, that advisory board by doing parent outreach, uh, the pandemic began. And so, members of that transition team decided to act as the interim advisory board to make sure that they were doing the work, uh, that was, that the board was set to do, and also continued to, uh, pursue the outreach necessary to, um, add, uh, members to that, uh, board and finalize that board. Ultimately, 16 parents were added to the board, uh, through community outreach and application process and interviews by a selection committee. Uh, and that's how the current board was, uh, created. And, uh, they, that board also created, um, an executive committee to lead and facilitate the work of the board. Um, and the board has been doing that work to establish, um, the board structure and the procedures, um, of the board, also while doing the work to fulfill the purpose that I mentioned in the beginning of this presentation. Uh, to give you, um, an idea of some of the activities and services of this board, uh, members, uh, many members of the board participated in listening sessions with Stephen Fong, uh, in regards to the LCAP. Uh, we did that several times, actually. Uh, members, uh, of the board also were interviewed, interviewed by Dr. Jeff Sprague and Dr. Jean Gonziere-Gerdin for the Experts Evaluation Plan, uh, for, for SAC City Unified School District regarding the African American students with disabilities to share, uh, our concerns and provide solutions, uh, for that evaluation plan. We have representatives serving on many committees, including the Significant Disproportionality Committee, the Facilities Master Plan Committee. Uh, also, we have representatives who are also a part of the Community Advisory Committee. And we currently have an applicant who has applied to be a part of the LCAP, uh, Parent Advisory Committee as well. Uh, recently, we wrote a letter to the, to you all, to the board regarding some personnel concerns in regards to the instructional aids. And, uh, we will continue to do that type of advocacy. Uh, in regards to that letter, I do want to state that we do feel that the response, uh, to the letter was quite inadequate. Um, the timeliness of that response and the acknowledgement of the letter being submitted to the board, um, was lagging and lacking. Um, I think parents deserve to be respected. They deserve to be heard. They deserve to be responded to and have their current, their concerns remedied. Uh, when the district, uh, does not acknowledge even the submission of the letter until days, uh, or weeks later, um, that makes the parents feel as though they are not being respected. Um, so we do have an expectation that you at least acknowledge. Uh, we know that sometimes it may take some time to provide a response, but at least acknowledge the, the, that the, that the request or the concern was received. Um, so as I mentioned, we are part of many committees and et cetera. So that's an example that we are here to be partners, for sure, but we are definitely here, uh, to advocate for African American and Black students. And we are most definitely here to hold the district accountable to, uh, to the recommendations and also to other factors and matters that are important, uh, to increase the outcome for African American and Black students. Um, just want to state that we currently have some, some extreme concerns about the learning loss that has occurred during the pandemic and also the normal learning loss that usually, um, takes place during the summer. And we are really concerned about what summer sessions will do and how they will help to reduce, uh, the impacts of learning loss during the pandemic and ensure that there is not learning loss during the summer. And, uh, I just will, I will end here just by one acknowledging that we greatly appreciate the efforts of, uh, Vincent Harris, who serves as our, uh, board liaison. And I want to thank you for taking the time, uh, to listen to us.
Thank you, Julius. We appreciate you and welcome to the team. All right. Uh, and we have two live comments from Terrence.
Yes. One on the CAC and the other on the African American Advisory Board.
Thank you.
Regarding CAC, um, I just want to publicly, um, just applaud CAC just as a, as a pipeline of leaders and advocates. Um, I've worked directly with many of them, um, previously, including Angel and Angie, um, Benita, Grace, um, you know, and, and the current iteration of Renee and Allison. They are always present, and that is most important. They make sure that their voice is heard. Um, they laid a template for many parents, including myself. My roots and advocacy in this district are through PTA. Um, but I made sure when I became SAC Council PTA president that I included their voice and their power and their presence and their knowledge and their wisdom so that we could truly speak for, you know, all kids. Um, I just hope that they don't, you know, ever, you know, just fail to realize the impact that they've had on all of our children. Um, you know, a lot of time they've done it in spite of, um, support from the district, and other times they've worked hand-to-hand with the district, but they show in multiple facets as to how, you know, they can get results for their kids, um, and all kids, um, through that work, um, you know, by serving on different, um, bodies such as the LCAP PAC, um, even SAC Council PTA, as I said, and, and other, um, district bodies. So, um, I just continue to applaud their work. Um, and I, and I continue to learn from them. Um, regarding AAB, um, just with it being the last, um, parent or community stakeholder group, um, I, uh, I just hope that, you know, again, just for transparency's sake, for establishing precedent, um, I know that typically when you guys make your choices for the LCAP PAC, um, it is with an intent to be as balanced and fair as possible. Um, but it goes a long way just by seeing those numbers, for example, in the previous presentation as to who the students are. We know who, we know, people there involved know, but to see it on paper, to see numbers, to see it represented in print or, you know, electronically, does something else for those people who might otherwise be engaged. So if you guys state before you make those decisions what your intent is, um, what process you're going to follow, and even if it's subsequent to the decisions, it goes a long way in establishing or re-establishing trust with stakeholders like myself because it leaves no questions unanswered. So I hope that you guys do intentionally include representation from each of the parent groups or the community groups, and you guys will still have the liberty to have at-large choices, um, of your own, you know, from each trustee area, from each board member. So, um, again, I, you know, I, I just, uh, look forward to you guys', um, I don't envy your, your choice because I know that there's a tremendous number of qualified applicants, um, and, and it always is, you know, which, which we really are a blessed district to have so many active parents and stakeholders, um, from so many different facets. And we don't always agree, um, but each of us through our own lens are really speaking for children, um, including you all. Um, and, and I just hope that we get to a place where we can just collaborate a little bit better and, and, and move the needle a lot further forward than we have been. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. All right. Uh, item 10.3, superintendent's report?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I will be very, very brief here. I just want to, uh, say thank you to all of our, uh, staff, uh, across the district. As I have visited, uh, many schools, um, over the past couple of weeks in particular. If you remember, um, we presented a video, uh, in a recent presentation about noise, and certainly we have seen more activity and more students, uh, interacting and engaging. Uh, and I just want to thank all of our staff who have continued, uh, to remain committed to the health and safety protocols of ensuring, uh, that we, uh, remain safe, um, despite all of the challenges that we continue to face to our parents and our families for their commitments as well, uh, to, uh, support us in, in, um, as we finish off the school year. Uh, and finally, I'll just, uh, just mention, um, that as we enter the final days of our academic year and today at a school site, I saw some of our students presenting their final presentations. And I've seen students, uh, my, my own children included, presenting their final projects and other students having final exams and, uh, uh, doing their, uh, end-of-year assessments, uh, promotions that will be starting, graduations, of course, that have already started. Uh, we were able to attend the New Tech graduation, and today I certainly want to apologize to our American Legion, uh, community that, uh, we had a board meeting on the day of their graduation, but, uh, we were there in spirit. And then, uh, over the coming days, uh, tomorrow, excited, uh, to be at our first comprehensive high school graduation, um, two of them at CK McClatchy Rosemont, uh, on Saturday at Burbank, uh, as well as West. And then, over the course of all of next week, uh, during the evening hours, um, spending time with our families, celebrating with them, uh, this important milestone. And, uh, as a parent myself, um, uh, being able to participate and drive through promotions for my own children, um, I, I know that it is not ideal, uh, nor is it what we would have wanted. And I acknowledge, uh, because I have received a lot of messages from families that would have wanted something different. But, but I just want to say that I'm, I'm in the same boat as a, as a father of three as well, um, having to, uh, just demonstrate grace that, uh, we are still doing everything that we can. Um, uh, and, and hopefully, uh, we will, uh, return back to, um, uh, what we're all used to, um, hopefully, uh, very soon here. But I'd like to just be very brief, um, and, and with that, uh, Member Pritchett, um, given just, um, uh, the late hour. Thank you.
Thank you, superintendent. We have a live comment, but we need to extend our meeting before I get to the live comment. Uh, so- So I'd like to extend the meeting to by 30 minutes. They all agree. Thank you. Motion second. All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you. Ms. Marini, live comment?
Yes, we have a live comment on 10.3 from Terrence Gladney.
Don't worry, I'm getting tired too, so I, I promise this is my last one. I want to share a story real quick. When I was Sac Council PTA President, Lily Williams and I, we, you know, we were developing a really robust system of programs and services. But what we felt we encountered a lot of times was decisions with the people that we weren't engaging with within the school district. You know, we had a great relationship. We came up with decisions and we're moving things forward. But we always felt like those people that we're engaged with didn't have the authority to act on behalf of the district or the superintendent. So we had to sit down with Superintendent Raymond. I'm just going to say really quickly, like when I'm, I, I wish I had my camera off or my, my screen off so I didn't have to see people's reactions when I speak. But anyway, I sat down with Superintendent Raymond and he delegated someone who did have the authority to act on his behalf. And what we found was that it was remarkably empowering. It alleviated him from having to do additional responsibilities. And I'll speak for myself as a community member. I feel like right now we are in a top down structure. I see a lot of interjections during school board meetings when staff have done a phenomenal job of making a presentation. And that doesn't speak well to a, a system of empowerment. It's almost like, you know, let me put my stamp on it. So just being honest and just being completely transparent, that's what I see. I know that other people see it, but we have a tremendous staff. A lot of people who, you know, have been here longer than any of you board members, myself as a parent or superintendent. And we have a great community of CBOs, business leaders, and, and just people who have had, you know, some presence in the district. And if we lean on each other collectively as a village, then we can better raise our children. Thank you. And good night.
Thank you, Karen. All right, item 10.4, President's Report. I just, I just wanted to congratulate all of our seniors this year. I know this is, we've endured a difficult year and we were able to get you all to graduations, which is the most exciting time of the year for me, seeing you all, you know, being able to cross that stage and receive your diploma. And a special congratulations to our very own student member, Sheik. So that, that is all that I have for my President's Report. I just wanted to make sure I said that. Item 10.5, Student Member Report.
Thank you, everyone. This is my last student board member report. Unfortunately, it's not going to be hugely special because I'm very tired and I think we all are. So I'm just going to briefly run through a couple of things. Congratulations to the American Legion Class of 2021 graduating tonight while we're here. And the New Tech Class of 2021 who graduated on May 28th. And all the classes that'll graduate in the next couple of days and over the next week and next Thursday, the class of 2021 of the Met. I just wanted to raise something that I heard in a public comment earlier tonight from Mr. Damian Harmony from Kennedy, which is, he was speaking about the internet troubles of having teachers use their personal hotspots. And this is something I've seen a thousand times at the Met personally. And we've talked about in the context of collapsing cohorts, how every minute counts. And so with the district's latest internet security program, as much as I think that was well needed and maybe far too late in its implementation for students being safe during distance learning, it has really put a roadblock on high schoolers being able to actually function in class. I have a film appreciation class, which required the teacher to rent out a film on YouTube or Amazon Prime, et cetera, et cetera. None of these websites would function at all without him having to take out his iPhone and use his personal data to show the movie. We couldn't do a DVD player because Zoom wouldn't let you share from a DVD. Lots of minutes lost, a number of films that we couldn't watch because we spent so many minutes each class period figuring that out. And so I do think that staff needs to look at maybe making our internet security protocol a little bit more, more workable for upper grades. The strictness on the elementary school kids is good because they're using those few websites. But when we're looking at on campus and we're looking at staff, I think there needs to be maybe keys, workarounds, or just a loosening overall. In addition, I do want to reiterate the need for so many of us to know what's happening in the fall. Whether that's calendar, which is hugely important, I know the Superintendent shares my concern about perhaps changing the calendar or just having a calendar at all. As well as for us in the public to know what is happening. I know that LA Unified, I think, tonight reached an agreement with their shareholder, their union about fall. And I just think for us to have that headline would bring peace to a lot of people's hearts. And so with that, I'd like to report from the Student Advisory Council that we have collected, completed selection of the new incoming cohort of our council. It's very exciting because it was tough getting people to apply in a pandemic. You know, so few people had seen the impact of the council on their campus as opposed to in a, in a regular year, you see these events happening all the time. You see your council member in the hallways that you can talk to all the times. This was tough, but despite that, we've have new representation from schools we've never seen represented, like SES. And so I'm very excited. Some very, very qualified and incredibly talented students applied. We took direction from the board and the Superintendent that was given to us two years ago very seriously, in that representation and regional equity was important to this board. Prior to me, we had 10 student board members, 70% of them from West and 3% of them from CKM. And you can imagine the CKM students were all in that one magnet program. And so as much as we had fantastic applicants from West and CKM, we didn't make them finalists. And we actually have our incoming student board member on the line with us on Zoom for a little surprise. Hello. So Jacqueline Zhang is an incoming junior at John F. Kennedy High School. She's on her ASB. She's originally from Hong Kong and I'll let her share some more about herself.
Welcome, Jacqueline.
Thank you. So hi, my name is Jacqueline and I am the student board member of the upcoming school year. I was born and raised in Hong Kong and had moved to Sacramento at the beginning of my freshman year. The past two years of living in this community has opened my eyes to the reality of living in the U.S. where it's supposed to be this melting pot of different cultures. My identity as an Asian woman also made more apparent the struggles that minority groups in the U.S. face in their daily lives. This inspired me to be more involved in my community, both locally and globally in order to amplify the voices of my peers. So locally, as said, I was part of the city government in Kennedy High, which gave me an insight as to how your school experience can differ based on your identity and what groups you belong to. And globally, I am part of an organization called Dear Asian Youth that strives to celebrate Asian voices whilst raising awareness for Asian struggles. And being part of these organizations definitely pushed me to apply for student board members so that I can dedicate even more of my time to advocate for a better school experience for all members of the district. And I'm especially honored to be the student board member as a rising junior. And I'm very excited to see what we can accomplish in the following school year. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Jacqueline. Congratulations.
And with that, I would just like to share something the Superintendent asked I share is that this is all will be shared in the board communication tomorrow and we're not taking anyone by surprise. And so with that, I'm, I'm going to share a lot of my final thoughts for my outgoing presentation on the 24th. I'm looking forward to getting that apple. But thank you all so much.
Thank you so much, student member, Sheik. All right, item 10.6, information sharing by board members. Before I get to, let me take this off, before I get to my colleagues. I just, we are aware of press releases regarding a vote of no confidence in our superintendent by SCTA and SEIU. The board would like to make the following statement. Supporting the academic, social, and emotional growth of Sacramento City Unified School District, I'm sorry, Sacramento City Unified School District students is the top priority of this board and our superintendent and staff. Our district thrives when students are the, are our top priority and all of us recognize our responsibility for creating the conditions that will allow us to succeed together. After shepherding the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of, I'm sorry, the Sacramento City, I guess I'm really tired tonight. Sacramento City Unified School District through the most challenging years in the district's history, we remain laser focused on the needs of all Sacramento City Unified School District students, especially those who have suffered the most through this global pandemic. As we prepare for another school year with a focus on addressing the impacts of the pandemic on our students' learning, our board members, parents, students, teachers, and staff throughout our district must not allow ourselves to be distracted from helping all of our Sacramento City Unified, Unified students meet their educational goals. Thank you. With that, any other board comments? Let's see, where we got on here? Oh, yeah. Member Villa?
I just, I wanted to echo too. At last week of school, enjoy it. We won't obviously see you next week. But enjoy this last week of school for all of our students. Enjoy your summer and we'll hopefully see you soon.
Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to point out that in our consent agenda, we have the school calendar for next year.
I plan on pulling it.
Pardon?
I'm planning on pulling it.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm getting a lot of emails on this particular topic, so I'll table that. And I just, I just wanted to share that I've had the opportunity to visit some school sites this past week. And, and I've seen a lot of happy kids, a lot of happy teachers, a lot of very happy parents that more of their kids are, that their kids are going to school more, more days a week, so four days a week. And just as a parent, I'm seeing happier students at my own household, even when they're testing. So somehow that is still much more fun than, than doing distance learning from home. So, so anyway, I just wanted to share that and looking forward to the graduations next week.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Okay. Item 11.0, Consent Agenda. I'd like to request to have 11.1D pulled from the consent agenda. If I can get a motion to approve the remaining of the consent. Second, all right, all in favor, student preferential vote?
Yes, on all open session items.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Perfect. All right, item 11 point, now we can hear 11.1B. Ms. Miss McCarron, thank you for joining us.
Absolutely. The, the calendar before you is the traditional school attendance calendar. So important to note, it is not the employee work calendars, which continue to need to be negotiated. What you see here for the 21-22 school year closely mirrors what the current year and the past few years have been with the first day of school being Thursday, September 2nd, and the last day of school being Thursday, June 16th. So while I know we've had over the years, a number of conversations around maybe moving the calendar up to, to a time closer to mid-August that is more closely around aligned with surrounding districts or in order to do a number of things, right? This, this one very closely mirrors the current situation. While I do want to say we would love to in the future continue to work towards that movement for lots of reasons, right? Be able to not only be better aligned, but to give students the opportunity, the advantage to take, to take, well, to take advantage of summer enrichment opportunities, jobs, classes, college classes. We end so late, that's traditionally hard for them to do. And another really big one is the summer, sorry, the semester breaks. So right now, as you'll see on the calendar, the semester ends at the end of January. So students have that two week break and then they come back for a month and finish up learning to end the semester. You know, moving the calendar up would certainly help with that. As well as give them more instructional days before having to take things like an AP exam, right? The investment placement. So it would do a number of things, but this is not that. This would, would again mirror what we've done the last few years, which has the students starting the Thursday before, before the holiday. So I'm happy to answer specific questions, but that's, that's what this is intended to do.
Thank you so much, Ms. McCarron. Did anybody, Member Garcia, did you have any questions?
No, I just wanted to thank Ms. McCarron for, for walking us through the calendar, which is essentially status quo. So I know that we've been interested in having a conversation about starting earlier for the reasons you've stated. I'm also interested in adding more instructional days, especially as we, you know, tackle the next few years to, to mitigate learning loss. So I think that's really important. But I just, I just want to know how, how does this get communicated to parents? I know I've been receiving quite a few emails asking for, you know, the first day of school. And, and I've been pointing them to this particular item in the agenda. But I'm just wondering, how do we, as a district, communicate that to all our parents?
Yeah, Member Garcia, we will make sure that we communicate to all of our families. We'll make note of the action that the board takes, assuming that you approve that. And also make sure that we dedicate one E connections article just to this as opposed to include it as part of a larger communication to our families so that it's clear that, that, that the board has taken action and, and people can put on their calendar the first day of school.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. And I'm assuming that includes social media, correct? And is there a possibility to do a connect at home?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can do all of those things. Typically, we, we do send communications to our families and then we post on our social media platforms. But we can also make sure that before the end of the school year that we do an all call to our families just to make sure that they can make a note on each of their calendars for the first day of school.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. All right, with that, I'd like a motion to approve Consent Agenda, item number 11.1D. I got a motion in a second, student preferential vote?
No.
Do we, we don't need a roll call on this, do we? We do need a roll call, Superintendent. Oh, I'm sorry, did not do a roll call on the original consent.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Perfect, thank you. Item 12.0, Business and Financial Information Reports Received. 13.0, Future Board Meetings, June 24th, 4:30 for closed session and 6 o'clock for open. Item 14.0, Adjournment. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
No.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you.